It is five o'clock PM and welcome everyone and ask everyone to please stand for the invocation to be delivered by Dr. Marion Taylor, Southway for Presbyterian Church. Thank you for being with us.
Absolutely.
Let's be in an attitude of prayer, please. God of all things visible and invisible, we pause now to acknowledge your presence. And with you as our guiding star, may we find our true vocation in service to people in need. Pour out your blessings on these assembled public servants, merciful Lord. If we grow weary in body or soul, sustain and renew us. If we need knowledge or guidance, place us in the path of help and grant us vision. And now let all whose trust is in God say amen.
Amen. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Legions to be led by Mayor Proton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated and we'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldrich here.
Commissioner Tippett?
Here.
Commissioner Wisman?
Here.
Commissioner Sauer?
Here.
Mayor May.
Here, we do have a quorum present. First item is citizen comments and first we have Ms. Kathy Warren. So if y'all just don't have been here, why don't you go to the microphone, just please, even though I call your name, just say your name for the record so the city clerk will have it. Thank you. But you know how to do that because you've done it before.
I'm here to speak about East Main Street. I had a little issue, it's the second time. I was going up to Lenny's on Friday and there was, I was on the right row, but I had to turn into Lenny's and get into the center lane. Unfortunately, there was someone that was coming through the light that must have been in the wrong lane, was heading into me. So this is the second time it's happened on the street, not necessarily at that particular area. So I was pretty freaky, I did jerk into the other lane and I just want to say that thank God there wasn't anybody over in the thorough lane. But the markings, and I hate to keep pounding this, we've got to do something with East Main Street. We've got to. The arrow is very vague. As I was going home, I was watching the lines, they're very, they're not colorful, they're not bright enough for anyone to see. I think it's dulled or something since it's been put down. But we have to do better on East Main Street and that area. And if you all don't think there's a lot of traffic there, let me tell you, it is a lot of traffic through there. So let's see if we can't get that area addressed, it's a small area, there and going through the sign and also when you're coming from Indian Hills, people have a tendency to get in this lane because they think it's still going through. They don't realize to go through to the upper part like going to Lenny's or up in there, that you have to be in this lane. So there's a lot of backwards and forwards. So if we could maybe do something with that, I appreciate it.
We will report that. Our staff will contact the Kentucky Highway Department folks.
Thank you.
Since that's the state road, we'd go out and do it today if we could. But we'll have to contact our transportation folks and our staff's making note of that.
Hello, Commissioners and Mayor. My name is Nicole Conkle. I'm a resident of the City of Frankfurt. I live at 105 Watson Court. I'm also a professional archaeologist and that is the only capacity in which I wish to speak with you today, just as your friendly neighborhood archaeologist, unaffiliated. Thank you for being interested in pursuing the expansion of a National Register listing boundary for city-owned property. Being passionate about this community and preservation, I've spent a lot of time learning about archaeological sites within the community, especially Fort Hill. I am not here to speak in support of or against your consideration on beginning the process of expanding the National Register boundary. But I would like to share with you some of my research on Fort Hill over the past year that may be relevant to this endeavor, especially if you are considering this discussion based on archaeological significance. The city, in accordance with the Kentucky Antiquities Act, obtained a permit in 2013 from Office of State Archaeology in order to conduct a more expansive archaeological survey than had been done previously. And there have been multiple episodes of archaeological survey done within Leslie Morris Park. So at that time, 133 acres within Leslie Morris Park were surveyed. As you're probably already aware, the boundaries of the archaeological site most commonly known as Fort Hill were recommended for additional expansion at that time. As such, and based on the text of that archaeological research, there are currently approximately 15 acres of previously documented archaeological sites within the boundaries of the park, which are either listed on the National Register or recommended as potentially eligible for listing on the National Register, specifically under archaeological criteria. I wanted to take this opportunity to let y'all know, if you don't already, that in addition to the Civil War component of what's locally known as the Fort Hill archaeological site, there's also a late 19th to 20th century historic African-American farmstead that shares the same boundary as the Civil War component of the site. The identification of that component of the archaeological site was part of the reason that the 2013-2014 archaeological report recommended expanding the archaeological site boundaries. There's another historic farmstead within or near the boundaries of Leslie Morris Park on the eastern side, and both of these sites have been recommended as potentially eligible for listing on the National Register. But additional archaeological investigation may be needed to make that final determination whether those sites and those site components are eligible or ineligible for listing on the National Register. So should the city decide to conduct activities within these boundaries or should they find themselves in need of a permit from the Office of State Archaeology to proceed with any activities or ideas? I'm volunteering to you my assistance. My time and resources are limited and somewhat restricted due to other obligations, but please don't hesitate to contact me in your capacity as a friendly neighborhood archaeologist. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you so very much.
Thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Sauer.
You know, I remember a few years ago, the University of Kentucky came over.
Yes.
And did a dig in front of the old Capitol.
Yes.
I mean, what are the chances of the City of Frankfurt being able to make that happen again?
There are many, many archaeological firms out there. UK has done a lot of the other work. The group of archaeologists that was at the University of Kentucky, they're no longer there. Now, the Office of State Archaeology is still there, but the survey archaeologists are now in western Kentucky, but it would be prerogative to contact an archaeological consultant. And if you guys need information on how to do that, I'm happy.
You're saying they're just in studies or research in western Kentucky, they'll come back to the University of Kentucky, is that correct?
No, sir. The research, the survey research archaeologists, I'm not sure if it was UKPAR or if it was the Kentucky Archaeological Survey, but those archaeologists are no longer under the helm of the University of Kentucky at all. But there are plenty of other archaeologists.
Okay. We'd like to know who and where.
Commissioner Tippett?
I'm sorry, Sauer.
Commissioner Sauer through.
Nicole?
Yes, sir.
Would you be able to, I'm sure, either our staff are highly competent, I'm sure none of them are experts in archaeology or historic preservation, would you be able to assist them and guide them through the bureaucratic red tape?
I would love to.
I'd love for you to do that, too.
Okay. My email contact information's on the sheet, sir.
Thank you so much.
Nicole?
Commissioner Wisman.
Thank you for dedicating yourself to expanding our knowledge base on understanding some complicated terminology and items that are impacting several projects around our community right now. I might suggest we have, as part of that study, it was launched 2013-14 because of cell tower installation on Fort Hill, I believe, or at one point, one of the archaeological studies was. And we do have funding dedicated because of that impact to offset future impacts that is dedicated to be spent on Fort Hill every year. So we might explore immediately, since there's so much activity, directing that funding for this fiscal year to conduct a study to determine the exact boundaries for future impact remediation. So I believe it's about 30,000 a year. We can ask staff to come up with exactly what we have to work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Thank you so much.
My name is David Hecker. I'm a resident of Franklin County. Do you need the exact address? Nope. Good.
Come on.
I'd be happy to provide it. I won't plead to fith or refuse to comment. I did want to come, during the last work session that I watched on Cable 10, I listened to Mr. Lewis McLean, who's a resident of Blanton Acres, made some comments about the trails and some potential activity on Fort Hill. I grew up in Blanton Acres. I spent probably the better half of my childhood on Fort Hill. I can remember when it was nothing more than blackberry bushes and an archery range. The road was blocked off at times, where the forts are now, where they're very well-defined. At that time, in my younger childhood, it looked nothing like it does now. So it looks a lot better now. It is very pleasing to go up there and walk. But Mr. McLean's comments kind of concerned me as to what type of activity was going on up there. So I decided to take a look for myself.
Mr. Hecker, let me remind you, something I didn't discuss with everybody about rules. Would you say, like, refer to anybody as a previous speaker?
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Previous speaker. I decided to go up to Fort Hill and take a look for myself because there had been talk about, I expected to find, you know, clear-cut trees, I mean, just, you know, everything taken down, but that is not what I found. I have to tell you, I mean, essentially what I have found were pretty much the deer trails that have been slightly enhanced. The Boy Scouts did a wonderful job on the bridges. There was some, you know, digging that had been done, but nothing that I saw that would have caused the erosion that was discussed. So I thought maybe there might have been a little bit knee-jerk reaction by several members on what they thought might be happening up there. I was leaving it at that. Again, I'm very thankful for the volunteers that have worked on those trails, the trails at Capital View Park, whether they be for mountain bike riding or for walking or hiking or running. Again, I'm just very honored that people go out of their way to volunteer and do that type of work. The only other thing I would like to add has concerned the turf fields, wherever they may be done. I'm still, would like to see details on both plans, whether they be at the schools or Capital View, but I am 100% supportive of turfing some fields so we can get some more activity to Frankfurt. I know I saw a couple of you at the All A Tournament in Richmond, where Frankfurt was. Very sad that we lost that tournament and, you know, there was an amazing turnout by not only our fans, but fans from several schools. It was, it was very well-attended from what I saw, the days that I was there. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Next, Mr. Paul Horace.
Thank you. I'm Paul Horace. I'm a resident of the City of Frankfurt. I currently serve as the Chairman of the Board of Directors of the Frankfurt YMCA and I'm here to speak on that this evening. Is this the time of the meeting?
Absolutely.
Okay, good. Thank you. I know you all have a full schedule, so I'll get right to the point. I think you all have been provided a pamphlet and a request letter for the Frankfurt YMCA and I'm going to refer to both of those, but as many of you probably know, the Frankfurt YMCA has been in serious discussions with the developer of what I'll term the downtown redevelopment project. That's parcel B, the 7.76 acres, and parcel C, the 4.12 acres that the YMCA currently sits on. In the pamphlet, you'll see what, that Mr. Sauer has there, you'll see what could be the front of the brand-new Frankfurt YMCA, which is what I'm hearing tonight. And if you go to really the second and the third page, you'll see what the downtown redevelopment will look like, where we have retail space and parking lots is the current Y lot. And then the new YMCA will be the purple building with a much smaller footprint than the 4.12 acres that it currently sits on. It'll be, it'll be a state-of-the-art, full-scale YMCA with gym, wellness center, swimming pool, group exercise, child watch, racquetball court, and other amenities. And if you go through the remainder of the pamphlet, you'll see, you'll see potentially what this could look like all the way to the last two pages, which is the footprint of a two-story YMCA. The current YMCA building is over 50 years old and it has serious issues. That's correct. That's the first and the second floor of the new YMCA. It has serious issues. We still have a lease, the Y still has a lease on parcel C that expires July 1 of The Frankfurt YMCA needs a new building, so the timing of this downtown redevelopment project comes at a perfect time for the Y and, I believe, the city and is our best opportunity to get this done. The cost of the new YMCA term key with equipment, fully ready-to-go facility will be $9.5 million. This project makes sense for a number of reasons, and I think it's different than other requests that you all have seen and will see. We want the new Y building to stay downtown. That's very important to the YMCA, the members of the board, and when I venture out on the sidewalk for lunch, I can tell from the members of the community, they want it to stay in the Y. Frankly, probably most of the people in this room grew up at a downtown YMCA and learned to play basketball or swim or do whatever there, just like I did. The Y's motto is "nobody turned away," and that's important. And what I want this board and the community to know is over the last decade, the YMCA has provided over a million dollars in financial aid to underprivileged, mostly children, kids, but also adults. It really has a strong sense of community for Frankfurt and always has, and we want to keep it there. YMCA serves every demographic, serves all ages, abilities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and it serves thousands of residents every year. In the request letter that we sent, we bullet-pointed a number of the things the Y does because I don't think a lot of people probably realize.
One minute.
All of the programs that it has. The Y thinks active community equals a healthy community. It has programs for exercise, youth sports, chronic disease programs, including diabetes prevention and Live Strong cancer survivor programs. All of these programs have really, really awesome stories behind them. And if you ever go to the, have been to one of the YMCA annual giving campaign startups, you'll, you'll know what I mean. The Y facility serves not only those who work, live, and visit downtown, but if we're able to get this done, and in connection with the downtown redevelopment plan, it will make downtown a more attractive place to work, live, and visit, for people to permanently live there. If you look at the Y, where it's currently positioned, you'll see that it is right across the street.
Could we please extend until completion?
Yeah. I'm sorry, you know, I'm a lawyer. I don't do well with that.
I can actually extend two minutes.
All right, thank you. I'll be quick. It's positioned with the Mayo Underwood Building, the new transportation cabinet building, and you see all of the multiple uses down there, including the new apartments. This makes sense and we, we're here, I'm here today on behalf of the YMCA to ask the city to be the catalyst behind this for two reasons. Number one, for the benefit to the citizens that we've just, that I've just talked about. But now is the time that the City of Frankfurt can recognize a revenue stream that it hasn't had before and that it will have for many years in the future. If we're able to take the old YMCA from parcel C and abandon that lease that comes up in 2067 and we get a new YMCA, then the City of Frankfurt will get a tax base, and what I will say, a quote "new" tax base, that frankly, I don't think it's seen in my lifetime. Think about all the acreage that's in downtown Frankfurt, in the heart of downtown Frankfurt, that there's no tax revenue on. And so I'm asking this committee to look at the long term, look at the long vision, which is appropriate the money to get the YMCA done, get this redevelopment, and it will pay off for generations to come in tax revenues. The ask, I know you have a lot of worthy causes that ask you, but our request, I think, is different because of the economic development component of this and the Y moving off its current location. We're asking for $2.5 million over five years and the potential financing support through the use of the city's bonding capacity. The YMCA volunteers will continue to aggressively go through fundraising efforts that they've already begun. With the city's support, this can be a reality. In closing, I will say this. We and the YMCA of Frankfurt and the City of Frankfurt cannot afford to miss this opportunity. It is the rare win-win situation. The citizens of Franklin County get a state-of-the-art that will be the hub of downtown Frankfurt and the city creates a quote "new" end of quote "tax base" that will produce revenues for it for generations to come. This is our opportunity and it may not come around again. Thank you all.
Thank you. Do you want to have a quick, Commissioner?
I'll answer. Very quickly, okay?
Yes, sir.
It's been my hope, Paul, since I ascended to this august body, that we would, over time, create such a high quality of life in the urban core that the folks who are commuting now into downtown Frankfurt to work in that new building, 1600, I believe, is the number, right? Total number?
Yes.
If we could just get a small percentage of those folks to choose to live, work, and play in Frankfurt, how does that increase our, you know, demand for our restaurants and our businesses and more foot traffic? To me, this is just a golden opportunity. And the only question I would have for you is, is do you foresee a financing, a financing package that would allow the city schools to benefit from property taxes there?
Oh, I think so, because if you look at the proposed development that's down there with the mixed use and the residential and the retail, if you look at the retail that's going to go in this YMCA parking lot, then I see, I see, you know, a, an economic advantage to the Franklin, Frankfurt Independent Schools that it probably has not seen ever.
Right.
I mean, think, give me another example, when they closed off St. Clair Street and put, I mean, you know, this is, and this is going to happen. This is going to take place, but, and that's why we really, the Y is such a key component because it, we won off that 4.12 acres. We won a new building. And to make this thing go, I think this developer wants parcel C, wants that 4.12 acres. And so we're working with a lot of constituencies. We appreciate the time that our people and a number of people are here in the audience. I won't ask them all to stand up. There's a lot of Y board members, Keith Gallagher and Paula Anderson, who's the CEO of the YMCA of Central Kentucky. They've been a big help, but, you know, we, we want to make this go and we won off that 4.12 acres, but the only way that we can make it work is through the City of Frankfurt, donations from private citizens, and then, and then potentially working with you all through your bond capacity, which I understand has been done in many municipalities, other municipalities involving the YMCA. It can be done. It's, it's not going to be easy, but I don't think we can miss this chance.
If I may. You know, we've, we've got a tremendous amount of financial requests right now and it's going to be very important for this board to explore what creates the best economic return on our investment. There's been some suggestions that frankly, I don't think do that in recent meetings, but I do think this is a linchpin for, for future developments in this, this area. I have a lot of questions, but I'll ask you one thing that's on tandem with Mr. Tippett's. Is this going to be a permanent leasehold, I assume?
Well, that, that, so that's what involves the developer. That will in large part be driven by the developer, but the developer, the Frankfurt Y, the City of Frankfurt, sitting at the table and figuring that out. But if we're going to use the bonding option, my understanding how other municipalities have done this for the YMCA is that potentially the City of Frankfurt would own the property, bond it, would own it, and lease it back to the Y and that we would service the debt, the Y would service the debt. Now, it's a lot more complicated than that and it can take a lot of variations from that. But that is a potential, as I understand, a potential mechanism to make it work. We can't, the Y can't service $9.5 billion worth of debt. We can't, even under your all's very, if we did it through your bonding capacity with the interest rates that are afforded there, which would presumably be much lower than commercial rates, we can't do that. So we've got to help, have help from the community and we're working on that. And we think that's, we've got some, frankly, a lot of people are waiting to see what happens here tonight, I think, to some extent, but I think we can develop some hybrid of that to make this a go. And, but that, to answer your question, it could take that forward.
That's one of my concerns. The YMCA has been in a permanent leasehold situation where you have no equity in your building for so long. I want to make sure that, that whatever results in this, that there is potential to, to retain equity, build wealth, and frankly, make sure that we have tax base coming back in.
And, you know, and I'm quite confident that the, the people who were sitting around the Y board table in 1967 were saying, oh my goodness, how are we going to get this done? And then we had what was, I'm sure, Cadillac in 1969, the old concrete, you know, everybody was building concrete then, but unfortunately, concrete has come due and it has come due for that building. But I really think that what we have here with, and we have the people in place that can do it, but what we have here is we can build a structure that will last long after 50 years and will be the core of downtown Frankfurt long after 50 years.
Commissioner Sauer.
Paul, you mentioned kind of the beginnings of the Y at that location, the 67 group and the cornerstone, I believe, is 1968 there on the building. And there also is a monument, a small monument out in front.
Right by the flagpole.
Please?
Right by the flagpole.
Yes. And what's that monument about?
Well, it's, you know, you're going to put me on the spot here. I've read it before, I can see it, but dedication to the community, I think, or something.
And Mr. Hogue, as a matter of fact.
Yeah.
And I guess that was because he was maybe president of the Y and a major contributor.
Right. Well, you know, I've had so many people and for me, you know, I had a blessed childhood and for me, it's all about the kids. And I went down, that provided me the opportunity to go down and play basketball against all varieties. And for me, I just think we've got to figure out, this is the perfect time for this YMCA to stay in downtown Frankfurt and continue to run its programs and really does do what it does for the kids and it's done probably, you know, I'd say Mr. Tippett spent more hours in the downtown Frankfurt YMCA than maybe all of us put together. And if anybody's seen Trump shot.
Did it pay off?
Yeah. No, Joe B. Hall just didn't have a spot on the podium. Might have been Adolf Rupp, but I don't want to thank myself. But in any event, on a serious note, it's, it, this, back to Commissioner Wisman's point, this is different because us coming out of that 4.12 acres and getting over there across from all of these state offices and all, that's, that, in my opinion, is the straw that's going to stir the drink of this whole deal. And I think that if we can, with your all's help and we all roll up our sleeves and get the community behind us, which I think a number of people are, are prepared to get behind us, then we can get this done. And I think, you know, the Y will thrive in this city and this city. and this city will thrive around the Y.
Your question.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to echo too the importance of what the Y has done in the community, and I've seen the good work they've done, that you all have done. Most importantly, though, for us to redevelop that area, we really do need to get the Y a new space because we need to take the old building and tear it down so we can open up Washington Street to make that development to what we've all on the committee envisioned to make happen.
And, and you know, if we had to stay in the old space, think about what that, that's just gonna be a real eyesore to the new space.
Absolutely, so.
And so it's all, it's all got a, it's all got a synergy together.
It's, it's part of what we were looking at when we were putting the committee together to redevelop there.
Well, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate the additional time. Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I just invite you all maybe back to another meeting? What I have a feeling, the commission may correct me, is we'll go through this process, get to long-term planning, we'll make a presentation to the commission on long-term planning. It'll talk about our funds, our projections. And I would, I would imagine they may call another meeting to get more in the weeds on what budget amendments there may be or future agreements related to funding. Maybe in the interim, if that does happen, we could talk privately, talk about options, and then put you all on an agenda for a later meeting. Would that be okay?
That's fine. We will be here when you ask us to be here. Some form of our committee, because one thing, and I, when I got called on the shot clock, I may have cut a part of it out here, but I want to emphasize if I didn't, that April 1, you know, the developer wants to hear from us by April 1. And so we're, we're working hard. We got a lot of people in this community and on this board spending a lot of time, began back in really October, November, but you tell us when you want us here, and we will be here with our people. And, and we'll meet with you all and whomever else you wanted to take to make this, figure out how we're gonna get this done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you.
Next is Rodney Williams.
He's speaking.
YMCA, he makes his head up.
Thank you, Mayor. Something to follow up on Paul's comments. You'll notice in both the second and third paragraph of the, the letter that, that you all received from the YMCA, signed by Paul, I'll read that, that second paragraph into the third one. It says, "While we are excited by this possibility, we have a very short period of time to secure enough funding for the project to proceed. Support from the city of Frankfurt will be the catalyst for this project. An early commitment from the city will demonstrate to other donors and community partners the city's belief in the importance of having a vibrant, modern YMCA in Frankfurt." And then the last sentence of the third paragraph, after it specifies the, the actual request, says, "We must secure the city's support by March 1, 2020." So to Keith's, Mr. Parker's question and comments to Paul, April 1 is the date that Paul mentioned. That is our go or no-go. And, you know, there, there are very, very important discussions that have already been taking place, that are taking place, that will continue the work that the YMCA board is doing. But I just, I can't emphasize enough to you all that April 1 is our go or no-go. Regardless of anything else that you have on your plate, regardless of, again, very, very considerable requests that you are considering, one of which I'm getting ready to speak to you about or update you on, from another organization. But again, our, our go or no-go to the developer is April 1. Come April 2, if we don't tell them we're in, we've missed this opportunity. And that's extremely important for you all to understand. That was the, the only point I wanted to make about the YMCA presentation. And if I could ask Bill to come up for just a second. I will briefly give you a quick update from the Frankfurt, excuse me, the Franklin County Humane Society, if you could hold that up. Wanted to show you three boards real quick. Mr. Marcus and Kerry, Bill's wife, would be here to do this for you this evening, except that you may know that the Franklin County Fiscal Court also has a, a meeting going on right now that, that Sam and others are making a similar presentation or are involved in that, in that exchange. Bill happens to be here for another matter that you'll, you may hear from him later, but, but he graciously agreed to come up here and hold these boards up for me. The first one, if you can sit here beside me. The first one is basically just a, and I think you all, Keith, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the board has, has received these, these diagrams maybe as recently as Friday or?
I don't believe we've seen that.
Okay, okay.
They were privately mailed out to some of us, at least.
Okay, okay. Over here to, to my right, your left, is the, basically the footprint of the existing facility. Here, just inside to the left there is, is the footprint of the original design that we started out as a little over 13, almost 13,300 square feet. Going further to the left is the revised plan with a little over 10,000 square feet. And then right here, you'll see that, basically the comparison of where, where we are, where we wanted to go.
One minute.
And where we're, where we're at now. Okay. The second board, thank you, Bill. The second board, I'll try to do this real quick. This one won't be as, as exciting. It's basically just the site, the, the proposed site plan for the Carpenter Farm site coming in at the end of the cul-de-sac there of Sour, off Sour Boulevard, there past the Frankfurt Plan Board administrated building. Okay. And then the last one is basically just the, the updated design showing, the bottom there is the, is the entrance, but showing the, the updated design work that the architect did for us. And that, again, is about a 10,030 square feet. And so we have heard the feedback from, from various community partners, including yourselves. And we have
That's time.
Done some considerable work
I'll give it to you.
To get us to a point where we are with our updated financial request from the city, as well as the county. And that's, that's all I, that's all I need to say.
That plan was emailed to staff on Friday morning.
Okay. I just wasn't sure Keith did it.
No, and the commissioner.
Oh, you did the same?
Okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. No, Chris, not for now. I'm sure we'll have some later.
Thank you.
We have a lot on our plate.
You could just get a couple million dollars with it.
Let's see, Rick Crombie.
My name is Ricky Crombie, and I'd like to discuss the Capital View turf plan that I started two years ago. You know, Capital View Park began 25 years ago. Soccer Field 1 was built in 1995 by the city along with a generous donation from the Sour family for a place to play soccer for all the local high schools because they didn't provide it on campus. Since then, Field 2, 3, 4, and 5 were established. Field 2 for additional high school play, Field 3 and 5 for select soccer, and Field 4 for youth football. The city's also built two adult softball fields and one baseball and softball field for the high school. Point being, the city has invested a great deal of money in improvements and maintenance for this community park. In 2023, when the park lease expires to the state, is the city gonna abandon the park because the lease is up? I don't think you will. So it's virtually a guarantee that there's not a sitting governor, Democrat or Republican, or state official that will take an active, established park away from this community, especially within the eye sight of the Capitol. Extending the lease with the state or working out a deal for ownership is a lot more likely, I believe. You know, the schools are in desperate need to upgrade their own property due to many years of neglect. We pay separate taxes for schools, and they need to accept their responsibility and not request city government tax funds. My 2019 property tax bill was 61.4% for schools alone. If the schools turf the football fields on campus and move soccer from Capital View to play at the state minimum-sized field, it's their choice and should be at their expense. Franklin County schools have $8,426,882.89 in reserve contingency funds. They should upgrade the facilities our taxes paid into. There are two recent references in the State Journal that agree. One, a mayor, one of the mayoral candidates mentioned in this platform the need to increase teacher pay and provide books. The paper's responding, quote, "However, school districts levy their own taxes and thus don't receive funds from city or county government for operation expenses such as salary and supplies." You could also include facilities in that as well. The second one was the editorial dated on 1/21 titled, "City Would Get More Bang for the Buck With Upgrade to Capital View Athletic Fields." You know, currently, the park sits idle for nine months. The high schools are not using the park. Upgrading the fields would allow for a drastic increase in usage. With the city, with the city investment, Capital View Park can become a unique venue unlike anywhere else in the state of Kentucky. The community needs a viable replacement for the loss of the civic center. Multiple turf, turf sports fields in a central location will attract large events and visitors and provide a much-needed revenue for local businesses. In my previous presentation two years ago, I showed how this park could generate a minimum of $4.8 million per year into the local economy. Field leasing fees paid to the city, estimated at $236,400 per year, could reinvest into the community for other needs such as additional park upgrades, the Humane Society, Dogram Park, and the convention center in the near future. This upgrade provides the greatest return on investment. The city commission's decisions affect all citizens in the community, city and county. I'm a county resident. The community is looking for civic leaders to make decisions for our future. We don't have more time for planning, studies, and delays. The longer we put off a major renovation of this park, the further we fall behind other progressive communities. Use Elizabeth Town as an example. Their community park is actively thriving and growing their community, and they continue to reap the benefits and reinvest into it enhanced by the nine new hotels and 20 new restaurants that have been added since the park was created. You have an opportunity to close the gap on them by investing in this park. Last year, the Frankfurt community experienced two embarrassing events directly related to facilities. The first one was the visitors who attended the Boys 11th Region Soccer Tournament at Capital View, and all the many complaints that you saw online about the field conditions and amenities. And the second one was moving the high school playoffs from Frankfurt to Versailles because they have a turf field and we don't. You know, as a reminder, the Girls 11th Region Tournament is scheduled to be hosted by Frankfurt this fall at Capital View. If we don't make improvements to that park, it would only show those around us that we have no commitment to future improvements. So bottom line, I'd like to see a better plan where everyone else wins. The city should invest in property they maintain with city tax funds. The schools should invest in their property with school taxes. KSU's also been planning a turf field football field. So if all parties work together, there's a greater possibility that all of us can win. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Eric. I just wanna, I, I know that you're running, going down through, I support turf fields, as you know. Sometimes it's being logical and seeing the whole picture and not just soccer field. So when we think of Capital View, it's not just soccer fields. It's baseball fields that need to be renovated. It's lighting, it's having new toilets and sewer put in. It's not just going in to do that, and it takes a process. And one thing that I completely agree with you that you were saying is that the longer we wait, the further we get behind. And if we just concentrate on soccer fields for Capital View and not do the whole entire thing and give our city manager and those people time to do a whole entire thing, we're gonna fall behind. And the best thing right now, for me, is let's help the schools do it. That's why we're doing it, not for Catricia Waldrich, not for Ricky Crombie, not for this. this. We're doing it for our students. And if it can take us 12 weeks to take some money from the city and help our students have three fields in this community, I don't see that there's a negative to that. I do think that Capital View needs to be redone, but it's also gonna take longer to start digging because we have the sewer department that has to do sewer first, and we have everything else, and you won't break ground on that until maybe next year, if next year. And so, to do it now, this is now. This is helping our community now. Yes, we have county schools, obviously. Some of their money goes where we have no idea. We see it in the State Journal. That doesn't have anything to do with our students here and helping our economic development now. If we have three turf fields, it doesn't matter if it's on the west side, the east side, or downtown. That brings economic development in here, and it gets the ball rolling. If we say no to our schools, we're dead until we break ground.
But isn't that why we pay those taxes?
I understand that's why we also, but we're also a city that wants to take care of our city and our county. And if we have the money to do that, to bring in money, why not make money while we're planning for Capital View? But when we talk about Capital View, we're only concentrating right now, as far as, unless the State Journal has misguided us, it's all about soccer. But there's more down there. Wouldn't you like to see that whole entire place take time, plan it, redo the baseball field, redo the soccer field? Parking is hectic. So, if you think you're gonna get a big old tournament in there with parking, what are you gonna do? Park 'em on East-West Connector? It's not gonna happen. It's gotta take time for planning. And guess what? You could put an overview down there. You can put another park. You could put picnic tables. You can even put a little small park in between there. There's a lot of things you could do. I'm not against it, though the State Journal has sort of implied that I am. I just think you're not gonna walk into someone else's house and say, "Oh, you need some upgrades. Oh, let me take care of that."
But that's active.
And think that that's okay. And no, I don't think the governor's gonna take that part, but I'm gonna make sure that I put every dime into it and that it's gonna help my community if I sit and wait and make sure the planning is right. We're gonna get the ball rolling. The ball is rolling. If I'm not mistaken, they're now looking at sewer and things of that. The ball is rolling. We just can't build a field on top of it. I completely agree with you. I have a soccer friend, and when we bring up Elizabeth Town, sorry commissioners, when we bring up Elizabeth Town, huh, their community, yes, they get economic development, but if you go down there and talk to the community members, the community members don't get any play on their fields. But guess what? I raise my hand. My sons played on their fields because I have to drive them from Frankfurt to Elizabeth Town. Go down and communicate, and talk to the community. Their facilities may be big and bad, but they do not take care of their community. They only take care of the community through economic development, and that's some of the research that I've done. I'm for it. I think it just needs to be planned. I have to trust my city manager to think that he's gonna do what's best. Yes, some people may not agree in, in taking our school taxes and doing that, but I think it gets the ball rolling, and we will have fields if we do this by August 1st. And if that doesn't make you happy, I don't know what will.
You're not understanding. I am for the schools to have the fields. I've gone to games for so many years, and when I played there, it's the same field when I played there, and they're in terrible shape. But it's the school's responsibility because they neglected them all these years. But the city has a park they can invest in that will drive the economy. How much time do you think somebody from the city is actually gonna get on the school fields? Once they get those fields turfed, it's all gonna be about the schools. It's gonna benefit the schools. It doesn't help the community that much.
No, I completely agree with you, but that's where you're wrong, my friend. The city has a right to do a contract. I'm sorry, I'll finish up. The city can have a contract, and how often we can use those fields for your league or anyone else's leagues or any other things. However, also taking consideration, some of the comments you made were that it was embarrassing. You used the word embarrassing for playoffs because we had to be moved to Versailles. Well, I remember that game. And Frankfurt fields were not, maybe they didn't like the look of it, and they could go to Versailles, but that field was not damaged where you couldn't play that game on that field that night.
It was not.
Furthermore, with the tournament that was reported in the State Journal over here, that someone finally started complaining about it. If it's that bad, it wasn't a big difference from last year's tournament to this year, but I didn't hear a lot of those complaints last year. But now, we're getting complaints. So, you gotta take in all that. I support it, but sometimes you have to just go through a plan to get through it and not just throw people under the bus or do whatever these people are doing in the State Journal because I support you. It's going to happen, but there has to be a plan to do it. Sorry.
If the mayor, if you would excuse me to respond to the mayor pro temp, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, mayor.
Finish your meeting.
Thank you so much. Sorry.
I don't have children in any of these schools. I have considered the matter before us in terms of the bigger picture, the role of city government and the benefit to the community as a whole. That is to say, I've endeavored to review this matter as objectively as possible in light of precedent, precedent available, available funds, and what offers the best use of the resources to use for the advancement of Frankfurt. Education is not a function of local government. While we certainly are interested in education as an aspect of the community, it is not the job of ours to fund school projects. The schools have their own tax base and collect taxpayer funds primarily through the property tax, but also the utility tax and other taxes. It seems to me inappropriate to give city tax funds to county schools. Two out of the three requests, requests before us are for county schools. It is our job to see the affairs of the city, Capital View Park, as a city park. I'm impressed with the benefit accruing to Elizabeth Town. Upon completion of a centralized soccer park, as Superintendent Cope said, pointed out, it resulted in nine new hotels and 20 new restaurants opening in Elizabeth Town. They're not my words. That's, that's the superintendent's words. Why I agree with it, why argue with a successful model? Let's get going on it instead like a, like previous commission did with Juniper Hill Park and the wonderful water park there. They started seven years ago and thought big. This commission needs to think big. In conclusion, I absolutely do not believe that Capital View Park will cease to be a city park. Nonetheless, Capital View Park is our park and our responsibility. It is a resource that offers great potential to be an economic dynamo for us, just as Elizabeth Town was. And here's the key also, to attract young families to this community of Frankfurt and to bring additional revenue from hotels and from eating establishments. Thank you.
I'd like to admit that as the record.
Mayor.
Do you want to pass it up, Commissioner?
Without objection, so.
No objection.
I think Mr. Commissioner.
Would you have a question?
Mayor, if I may, I just wanna thank Ricky specifically and, and all the, the folks that have been so dedicated to working on broadening our, our vision for this community. We, we have a really transformative time in the period of this community with finite resources, and we have to best invest those with the biggest return possible. There are a lot of great, fun things that this community can do, but I believe that investing in, in schools' infrastructure when they have such reserve on their own is not going to generate the returns that something like a full renovation of Capital View Park, YMCA and otherwise will do so. We've got to be strategic in evaluating the return on our investment, and, and I'll have more on Capital View Park in the next two weeks, but, or next meeting, but I'm dedicated fully to seeing our, our entire park system expanded greatly. We have a landscape that's like any other in this entire state and potential to bring people here just because of what we have and we don't use already. So, I'm encouraged that some of my commissions seem to, to be forward-thinking and, and want to invest in the, the time and the resources to, to create full plans and involve the entire community to develop what can, I know what we can realize. So, just thank you.
Commissioner Tippett.
I would just like to inform the, and I believe the city manager will support me on this. We're, we're gonna have a long-range planning committee, uh, meeting soon, and we're gonna thrash these priorities out. And for anyone who didn't think that that four-point, whatever it is, million dollars was gonna last very long, we'll spend it quickly. Okay. You can tell by the number of requests, right? And they're all substantial. But we, this board will prioritize, and it'll come down to a vote. Thank you.
I would just like to add, thank you for sharing, and Ricky knows I'm being well by him. He knows that I support him in his ideas. But I just want you to know, every single commissioner here, Commissioner Wisman, is very forward-thinking in this regards to the soccer fields and the hopes of Frankfurt. So, I know that you sort of left out a few. I'm not sure who you're speaking of, but I know every single person, every single commissioner, as far as the mayor is concerned as well, is very forward-thinking when it comes to the soccer fields, the economic development that will help in our community and things of that nature. Just some of us commissioners don't wanna talk about it for another six months, and then it go on for another year or two or three.
Well, Rick, and thank you, Mr. Crama, for speaking and for the work you've done on this. Say, I was mayor when all those fields were expanded and we, the bike trails, so we worked really hard on that and with the understanding that what we did was huge at the time, but it would need to progress as, as time advanced. So, it's been 20, 21, 22 years since we started on it. We broke ground on it in 2000 because I still have the shovel. But it was always the intention that, that would, we would come back and we would, we would continue to expand on, on the park. So, I definitely hope that we get something worked out in the next few months so we can, we can continue to see young people enjoy themselves in, in having opportunities for the economic benefits that those bring. Uh, you wanna say something? Good. Sorry, city manager.
I would like to first say that I'm probably privy to some information that a lot of you are not. We're gonna give a long-term planning summary this evening that I'm kinda conservative. I hope I'm too conservative, but we're gonna show in 2025, if we don't make the, any of these investments asked tonight, if we don't add budget amendments in the next few weeks, we're gonna eat $10 million into our reserves by 2025 if we hold just 2% raise for staff each year. That is the impact that our retirement and personnel costs will have on our budget. And there's a whole lot of good ideas. We have a million-dollar request in Humane Society. Well, it's a great request. We've got $2.5 million from the YMCA. Another great request, we've got $2.5 million for Capital View Park. I look at it as if it were my money, that if we were to enter an agreement with the schools, I don't agree with the million and a half dollars to the schools. What I, what, what I told each superintendent is $250,000 for each one of them that would build two, that would go towards two turf in the county or at the county schools, which are inside the city limits, and one would go towards synthetic turf at the city school. That would be a $500,000 investment into turf fields that already have restrooms, seating, lighting, concessions, everything we need. It, it is an honorable request by Mr. Crama. He's worked his butt off trying to get these turf fields at Capital View. But a lot of the plates from the Class A tournament in previous years were poor restroom facilities, poor concessions, poor seating. If we build two turf fields at Capital View, we have to upgrade the seating to hold the people that will come. We have to upgrade the lighting on both fields. We have to update the restrooms on both fields. We have to update the sewers and concessions. You can't control access. We need fencing so people have to go through a gate and play and pay an admission fee. To me, I've estimated $2.5 million improvements to put two turf fields with all the stuff required. So, from my simple mind, we can pay $2.5 million, get two turf fields, or we write a stringent agreement with the schools, pay $500,000, get three turf fields, and they write into the agreement, we could use them, we can advertise them for, for select soccer, we can advertise them for other tournaments in town. If they don't wanna sign that agreement, then we don't give them anything. We're not supplementing their budget. We are purchasing a right to use those fields and market those fields for tournaments in this town. There's, there's a whole lot of requests on the table. There's not near as much money as it sounds like we have, and if y'all wanna stick around what's long-term planning, it, it's, it's kinda grim.
I thought you were gonna say they got nothing in their life to.
Mayor, if I may.
Let's say that out loud, so. Sorry. I knew it.
Mayor, if I may. I just wanted to say, if people tuning in on Cable 10 and other things may not understand, you know, the city manager expresses his opinion, and, and his opinion is not necessarily that of the commission, and ultimately, the vote is up to this body to decide. City manager can make recommendations based on his opinion, but mayor may not hold any weight with the rest of the commission. So, I just wanna say what's been reflected is, is an obvious preference of city manager and Commissioner Waldrich are not necessarily shared amongst the entire commission, so. Thank you.
We always, we have a little asterisk after everything, like this may not express the whole views of the entire board, right?
Exactly.
Revote for revote.
Until we reach to a vote.
We must respect our city manager.
Thank you all. Well, I had a joke to try to break the ice, and now you maybe forgot it. It probably, it really wasn't that good.
I think the ice is already broken.
Mayors, that's the last of the citizen comments.
It wasn't good.
We're headed to insurance.
Commissioners.
No, we have like six to eight minutes.
All right, next. I had Susan Calvert. We asked, so others just said they were gonna save the comments for what's in agenda item, which you can speak a lot longer if you wanna do that.
We just told it was an agenda item that.
Oh, I was talking to this, Calvert, the insurance. That's okay.
Thank you, Ms. Prosser.
They were gonna wait. So, they were gonna wait and do it on the agenda item if you, if you wanna skip down.
No, I just wanted to ask to be included if there is discussion on behalf of.
Absolutely. Okay, perfect. We'll do that.
So, mayor, are we gonna move all the insurance discussion? I mean, under the item?
Right, it's, they're, they're already on there, so they're gonna, they'll just speak into that tone if that's, unless there's objection.
No objection.
No, we have Ms. Margaret O'Donnell.
Good evening. My name is Margaret O'Donnell. I live in South Frankfurt, and I would like to talk about recycling. When I moved to Frankfurt in 19, I, I moved to Frankfurt in 1991. I was gone between 1994 and 1997, and I've been back in Frankfurt since 1997. It's hard for me to recall when I learned about recycling, but I know when I returned from California and New Jersey in 1997, that it concerned me that Frankfurt had no recycling. I remember writing a letter to the State Journal saying, you know, this is the capital we need to get with it and do what other people are doing around the country. I got a lot of positive feedback from that. It was sometime thereafter that Frankfurt did start recycling. I still have my old red recycling containers that I still use for various things. I was thrilled when this commission in 2011 passed, I'll just call it what everyone else called it, pay-to-throw, the incentivized recycling. It, to me, was one of the best things that this commission ever did for this community. I was hopeful that it would lead to a full-time job for someone in the city business who would deal with sustainability issues. Instead, what happened was with the change of, of people who were on the commission, the pay-to-throw went away. And I don't think I'm being dishonest when I say it's really kind of gone downhill since then. I can remember getting the notices, you can no longer recycle colored glass. Then last year, we get the notices that we can no longer recycle paper, we can no longer recycle glass at all. I understand that I, as one person, do not make a difference in all of, you know, the whole hillbeams of humanity and, you know, trying to have a sustainable community. But I have saved all my paper. I save all my glass. When I go to Indianapolis for work, I take my recycling. I take my recycling of paper and glass to friends who live in Louisville. Those communities still have recycling, and this is the state capital. We have to do better. We have to, we just have to do better about what we do in this regard. And I just, I've called to inquire, and I get no answers. It's like we don't know. And I understand markets change. I understand all of that. But I think Frankfurt not only needs to get back to the business it was doing with recycling, but it needs to kind of anticipate changes, needs to think about what this capital city can do to be in the 21st century in this regard. And I have just felt, it's just felt like apathy to me, and I have some indications that there are some movement behind the scenes, but I have wanted to come for quite some time and say we have to do better. So, thank you.
Thank you. I wanna say too, thanks for that concern. And we do say from everything, one person does add up to make a difference on that. We actually started a recycling program in 93, 92, 93, and we actually, shortly after that, we hired a part-time person in our public works department to be our recycling coordinator, went out to the schools and educated people. And at the time, we did see an uptick in people recycling after we had that person employed. And as you said, as commissions changed, some of the folks didn't support that position, and it went away. And then, when we went to a larger recycling program, we have a, a full-time person in our public works department that works on the recycling end, but we haven't done the outreach that we used to do as much in there. This guy back from the mayor's conference, and there's a whole track on like the global problem nationally with recycling. So, we're not the only community. There's a lot of them that are having the same issue. It's, it's, it's the markets. When China quit taking a lot of the recyclables, that affected a lot of the U.S. markets. I, I did have a conversation, one of our commissioners informed me within the last few hours that he'd found some information on another community, and I'm sure you'll talk about that. You don't have to, but you may. And I know our staff has been working diligently. I, I don't think anybody doesn't support recycling. I think for the first, first time, I think there's five members that are all in agreement on, we want to see that expand, and our staff has been under the directive to go out and, and find alternatives if, if need be to other markets. Lexington is the main market that we deal with, and we're at the mercy of what the market will accept from us.
Can I say one thing?
Yeah, please come back up.
You reminded me what, what my concern was when I came back here. It was that Frankfurt did not recycle glass was what the concern was when I came back in.
And we did, we did, and then it went away, and then it came back, and then it went away again because of the market.
The markets, right.
Well, I am happy to hear you are concerned.
Oh, yeah. Oh, we're concerned, oh, definitely. Oh, yeah, just so you know, and anybody else that doesn't understand that, we have, our city manager has directed our staff through our concerns to find other alternative markets if possible. There's also, I almost spent a lot of time on it, but sometimes the cost of transport from here to the market, there, like the amount of time and the, the cost, there's, there's a lot of factors that go with it, and will. Can somebody from staff give Ms. O'Donnell after, offline here, do it after hours, after our meeting tonight, to give her some updates?
Katie Beard, our director of public works is back there.
Okay, and her email address is on the, on the list if, if need be.
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner Wisman. I knew you would.
Of course. You, you brought up the point a little too early. I was gonna bring it up under new business. We do have options. There's a tremendous amount of misinformation out about the recycling markets, which are true of the, the coastal communities of the United States, but don't affect us as much as, as been predicted and, and said in, in some communications and hearsay. Two weeks ago, I organized a tour of Solid Waste Task Force from the county and Concerned Residents and our Solid Waste Task Force Coordinator and the counties as well to go visit West Rock Facility in Louisville, who are a, one-stream system like ours that will take all recyclables, glass included, all plastics, all papers, almost everything, even Styrofoam and compostables. So, I'm very excited to explore the opportunity for us to ship and expand our recycling program and really relaunch our program to send things to, to that market, who have 25 production facilities of their own, making food packaging containers and other things that have direct market and actually can't get enough recyclables right now. So, they were excited about Frankfurt's potential in, in coming there, and we can now recycle to that facility at a reduced rate from per ton than what landfill charge is. So, I'm, I'm excited that that's been a, a shift recently, and West Rock Group has really invested in a facility in Louisville in the last couple of years. If anyone in the community is interested in going to take a tour, there is a contingency of Frankfurt going this Thursday morning to tour that facility again. Some members of the community, Anne Marie Rosen and some others, have helped to coordinate that tour, so please contact me, Anne Marie, or one of the commission, and be very excited for everyone to go. But I'll be in new business, bringing it up again, asking the commission to direct our staff to, to explore sending things to that facility and expanding and really relaunching our program. Been very concerned as much as the community is that the last three weeks have really meant the death nail of our recycling program, and getting people used to putting things back in those, those bins is gonna be a difficult challenge, but if we can revive saying that everything is taken, it's very exciting. I did have many conversations with Lexington and some of the Cincinnati markets. Cincinnati's expressing the same thing, but it's probably too far for us, for us to ship things for cost-wise, and Lexington is, is at a diminished rate permanently. They have no plans to expand the plastics or paper beyond drop-off facilities. So, I think as the capital city, we, we absolutely. So I think as the capital city, we absolutely mimic your comments, Ms. O'Donnell, that we need to take a more active role. And as a small community that owns our own trash bins and our own trucks, we can be malleable in maneuvering how we affect or how we relate to these changing economies. So it's coming, I guarantee it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Since there are several candidates running for the city commission in attendance, I wonder if Commissioner Wiseman would like to invite them along with Ms. Rosen as well?
They all have been.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think all of them have been. Thank you, O'Donnell.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Because I wasn't aware of the trip.
Oh, he left you out?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
But then again, I'm not running.
But you're still a commissioner.
Did the research team found this?
Excellent, Charles Bogart just signed up. Did you wanna speak on this, or did you wanna speak under when it's on the agenda?
I guess when it's on the agenda.
Yeah, you may not, he may not.
Commissioner Tippett asked me if I wanted to ask you that because he thought you were here to speak on the actual item.
Okay, I'm on your page now.
Okay, thank you. It's down the agenda, I can't find it off the top of my head, I'm looking. It's number six under action items. That'll be about three hours from now. Next, sorry Captain, we have Captain Kevin Mink and I see Sergeant Clark. Is it, I see Sergeant on, yeah, I was having a look, I was like, oh gosh. So Captain and Sergeant?
Mayor, if you're permission, maybe we should have it just stand up here.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think they want for the Cable 10 folks to try to get the flat microphone, it's for the TV. If there's any way, that's just for the house microphone, the flat microphone, see that black thing? That's actually a TV microphone.
So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
And you can roll that too if you want to.
So my name is Captain Kevin Mink, I'm the officer in charge of the Lexington Medical Recruitment Station. My team and I, which is only four total, we cover 23,000 square miles of Kentucky in search for over 100 specialties of healthcare providers for the Army and the Army Reserve. So why I'm here, some questions. So the reason I'm here is because the Frankfurt Fire Department lent us a lot of their training aids to put on a class for all the undergraduate students at UK to promote the Army and the Army Reserve. So I brought with me some things to give to them as a token of our appreciation.
Okay, great, thank you.
So at this time, Mayor, if we have our Chief Frisco and also have EMS Director Joe Sebastian.
We saw you mention Sergeant Clark was a longtime member of our Frankfurt Fire Department. When you retired, you were the medical director, not medical director, but EMS director.
Yes. So for starters, I'd like to present a flag from the Lexington Medical Recruitment Station. It reads, "Thank you for your support to the Frankfurt Fire Department, thank you for all your support from the Lexington Medical Recruitment Station." And I actually have something on top of that as well. So we follow under the National Medical Recruiting Company and what's traditionally done for excellence in the Army is to get a coin. So since we follow to them, I made sure we got a coin from the command team and it's traditionally presented in the form of a handshake, so I'd like to do the same thing as well. Thank you for the help, I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you, thank you for the work you do.
With my reserve unit in Lexington, we are a training unit and we have soldiers five to six times a year from the entire northeast part of the United States. They come to Lexington and they, we train them with required annual training that they must have to keep their combat medic skills up. And the Frankfurt Fire Department has been instrumental in supporting us with equipment when we have more soldiers than we have needed equipment. I've been able to come to Joe and Chief Frisco and they have been more than willing to help out with our mission and therefore we can keep the Army medics trained, keep their warfighting skills toned and honed to the best of our abilities. And again, Frankfurt Fire Department, they've been awesome. So these guys also need a big round of applause because they have been so instrumental in helping us accomplish our mission.
Thank you so much, Captain and Sergeant, we appreciate everything you do. Do you all do, do you do biochem stuff there too?
Nope, I'm sorry.
Does your unit do biochem?
Yes, sir, it's 71, Robo is a biochemist, so 100 different specialties we'll take.
I just wanted to give you that recognition too, that what you're doing is keeping other soldiers safe and when there's chemical or biological attacks, that this unit comes in and these are the people that the soldiers call when they're in trouble. So thank you. All right, just making sure, did anybody else wanna sign up on citizen comments that didn't get a chance?
Do you want to get in the back?
Oh, thank you, I'm glad I did, go ahead, please come forward. And you can just say your name if you get, you can sign away.
Hi, my name's Connie Limley, I'm a local farmer and I'm just here to encourage you to adopt the Local Foods, Local Places Action Plan that's before you today. I really wanna thank the city a year and a half ago for reaching out to the EPA and applying for technical assistance on this. And also thank all of the city staff who supported this process. And also all of the community members, over 70 folks, who were involved in September in helping to add ideas and draft this plan. So I think the most significant thing about it is that it provides a vision for how local food can support downtown revitalization and economic development in our community. And that's a win-win for everybody. And it also lays out kind of the foundation of the pathway for how we can get there. And one particularly exciting thing is even before the plan was finalized, just the connecting of folks who aren't always talking about these things led to the city schools applying for a farm-to-school grant. And there's just lots more synergies and possibilities going forward. And your adoption of the plan would just help give all of that a little additional oomph, so, thank you.
Thank you, and we should also thank our congressional delegation who helped with that and Andy Siff, our city legislative agent who works with us, was instrumental in setting those meetings up. So thanks Congressman Barr and Senator Paul and Senator McConnell and their staffs who made us all feel welcome when we went up.
Mayor, I think your comments are well taken too. And Connie, just a little piece of history in that development of the grant too. Part of the origin of that grant was our trip to Washington DC last year, sponsored by KCDC as well as Andy Siff, our grantsman that works in. Our hats off to KCDC and Andy for helping along that grant.
Mayor, if I may?
Commissioner, Commissioner Wiseman, I just heard someone.
I think it comes at a great time and I think it's imperative for us to consider local foods and what has become a bit of a food desert in South Frankfurt. I serve as the mayor's appointee for the Housing Commission and for the first time in history, the Old Southern Hotel on Second Street has nine vacancies that have not been able to be filled because of the lack of a grocery store that's walkable. So in effect, we are experiencing immediately the impacts of accessibility to food and we've got to really dedicate ourselves to finding some viable options, I think, to support our community, especially those that are struggling in whatever forms that takes. So I just wanted to thank everyone. I was, we were all the way at a conference, the League of Cities Conference, I'm unable to participate in September for the planning session, but I wanna thank everyone that was involved in that. And the plan is really a great step towards some independence for some of the people that are most in need. Thank you.
Thank you all very much, I'll be right back.
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
If I may request, I believe three of us requested to put the Franklin Center for Innovation on the agenda, didn't make it there. So I'd like to request that there are four members of the center here, that we give them each up to five minutes if they need to speak on a presentation they wanted to make to the commission about the center, rather than just adding them to the agenda. I thought we could just let them speak now.
We can, if there's no objection, does anyone object to that?
I believe Gary Stratton had to leave, but Jason and the others are here.
Does anyone else object?
Just as citizens' comments, I think it'd be appropriate.
Okay. And you want to say something, go ahead, Senator Clark.
There were not three commissioners that let me know to put this on the agenda, that's an erroneous statement.
Discuss it later.
Come on up, guys.
Now, I don't mean to run out of you, I was gonna, I had to run out while the consent cameras were being read, but I'll be right back.
Good evening, my name is Jason Allen, I'm the director of the Franklin Center for Innovation. Gary was gonna do a introduction, but he had to go teach class. So he wanted to thank you guys for the time. Thank you for your time this evening, I appreciate it. My team and I have a plan to bring jobs to Frankfurt by opening a Makerspace here. In order to do this, we're asking for $60,000 in startup funding from the city. We believe that this is a worthwhile investment for the city with a five-year payback and increased tax revenue, increased community engagement, and educational enrichment for the citizens of Frankfurt and Franklin County. Makerspaces are a relatively new phenomenon, so I'll clarify what that is. A Makerspace is a workshop environment that brings people, tools, and training together in order to enable innovative creation. For example, the Franklin Center for Innovation will feature 3D printers, CNC routers, a laser cutter, computers, robotics equipment, sewing machines, and various hand tools and design prototyping tools. For a regional membership fee, community members are given access to the tools needed to create things for themselves. Successful Makerspaces in other cities cater to several distinct populations. Students, small businesses, engineers, and hobbyists. They are able to enrich students' education with job-relevant training in engineering disciplines and advanced manufacturing. Small businesses use Makerspaces to work, to create marketing materials, or to pioneer products. For example, the dongle used for point-of-sale processing by Square was invented in a Makerspace. It's now a multi-billion dollar company. Engineers and hobbyists use Makerspaces in order to tinker and create custom items. With your funding, we will open the Franklin Center for Innovation within a month, offer summer camps and after-school programs to enrich students' STEM education, and offer community classes on woodworking, 3D printing, sewing, coding, and computer-aided design, to name a few. We have a detailed business plan with revenue coming from memberships, classing camp fees, and public events such as woodworking conventions that will bring dozens and dozens of people to town. We've done it before and we know we can make it work again. And we believe that these sources of income will allow us to be self-sustaining. We also have plans to engage in solving community problems, like our food desert. We're working with a group from Lexington that is still interested in coming here. We just met with them this weekend. We want to partner with local schools and provide training and recruitment support for local manufacturers. My team and I already have most of the equipment and the experts we need to open this space. We are asking the city of Frankfurt for funding in order to completely cover our first year's operating expenses, offer scholarships to summer programs and local students, and pay for the initial marketing. Your $60,000 investment would create three full-time jobs, would fund the beginning of those jobs, as well as teachers for after-school programs, camps, and weekend classes. We will enrich the education of local students and increase community engagement. With your help, I believe that our home will become not just the capital of the state, but a capital of innovation as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Commissioner Wiseman.
Jason, can you explain, we've discussed this at quite a bit of length, but the request is $60,000 will fully fund the first year's operation of the center, which with the commission's funding will be able to be open within about a month, in March.
That would cover all of our operating expenses, that would be our rents, our electric, our water, all those operating expenses.
And you presented already to the commission that Mr. Boo has offered the old Hex building to.
At a considerable reduced rate, he actually offered us three months free rent.
Can you explain the goal and the necessity of considering funding now and tonight was to be able to have the center open for summer camps?
We want to offer summer camps to about 100 kids a week. And to be able to do that, we have to know that we have a space available so that the funding makes sense for us and it also makes sense for us to start, excuse me, offering classes. Because if we don't have a place to put those kids, then it doesn't make any sense to start doing that. And some of the topics, if you don't mind, give me a second. We're looking at CAD and 3D printing, projectile motion, drones, graphic art, first aid and CPR, tabletop games, astronomy, lasers light and quantum mechanics, and garden to table, as well as working with local scout troops on their merit badge programs. As all part of our summer program after school and also weekends.
And that's within a couple of months, May, beginning of May through August.
And then we plan on actually doing a STEAM fair the last weekend before school restarts, where all of our kids will be able to come and present their projects they made over the summer and actually compete in a 4H fair-type environment where they can earn credits toward future classes.
And I circulated the budget last evening after receiving it from you to the commission members. But this center, with this initial investment of $60,000, is predicted to be fully self-sustaining in year two.
Yes, sir.
There's a great business model and a real opportunity here.
And we were very conservative in our numbers as to what other programs have done. Members is a small portion of the income. Where it becomes real for us is to offer those summer camps and to be able to scholarship, you know, 25 or 30 kids in there as well with your funds and to be able to draw from those surrounding communities, bringing people to town. Our goal as well is to try to elevate the innovative creativity of Frankfurt and Franklin County. I just read in the paper that 12,000 people a day commute here for work and then they leave and they don't, their tax dollars are spent elsewhere. We want to try to bring some of that back to Frankfurt and offer that for being an innovative cap. And we're not, we're not looking at welding and woodshop and that stuff yet. We're looking at the stem, the core. And we say STEAM because we want to put the arts back in it. We call it making STEAM and that's what we want to do, is to offer those programs to kids and young adults. And Mr. Stratton, Dr. Stratton has offered to teach financial literacy and some of those other classes that we think some young adults and adults may need, that maybe don't get that at KSU.
And just, I wanna thank you for everyone for the work, but one last point of clarification. This is, I think it's important for the community to understand and one of the reasons I wanted you all to present again is that this center really is not just geared towards children. It is truly young adults through old age. It'd be a space that multiple people in the community can rent for a very small fee and teach courses, whether it's teaching the next generation of masons whose average age right now is 65-plus and there's a great need, or the children's summer camps that focus in some technical areas that they may be able to then get some experience and go the next year into high school to further. I'm excited about the overarching potential to work with many of our industries in town to do some trainings as well.
Yes, we've had a lot of interest from local industry as far as maybe potentially helping them vet out incoming employees.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may? I can't, I can't find your business plan in our reports and so forth.
I apologize.
Could you provide that to the city clerk and your remarks today to the city clerk? And she will distribute it to the commission, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You'd already done that once before, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I thought you.
The business plan wasn't in the previous packet, I actually have those with me. I can leave those with you if you see them.
Yeah, that'd be great.
City clerk.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Erica. I just wanted to say, of course, I support you guys, I think it's phenomenal. I don't know about that price tag, however, I think, you know, we may be able to assist. I'm definitely gonna sign my sign-up for some of these classes, I think it's very interesting. But I just also, not that, I don't have any more questions for you, I just wanted to make clarity that, so there wasn't a confusion, that there wasn't three commissioners that wanted this on there. So I just wanted to make clarity, so there's no misunderstanding. We actually received an email this morning at 7:01 AM from Commissioner Wiseman and stating in regards to your two emails that you sent and my request, when it came across my desk to wonder if I wanted this put on, I just said, yes, I'd like to have it on the agenda if they can provide us an ask letter that says what they're wanting and why. You basically gave us that verbal, but that's what I was wanting in order to put it on.
Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
So that's sort of why it was not on the agenda, so I don't think it was put off on Kiva. It was a misunderstanding, that he really just got the email at 7:07 this morning. And if you're not aware, the agenda goes out Friday, it's out 24 hours for the meeting.
I appreciate the time very much.
No problem.
You will.
If somebody else, if somebody else can give you the explanation.
No, we're good.
Okay, thank you so very much.
Thank you.
So you see the business plan, I did it again, the business plan and these comments.
I need the business plan and your comments.
Yes, sir, thank you.
And Shermae, we'll make sure that we hit them.
You can send them to Shermae and she will send them out to everyone.
So should I email her, sir? So should I email those, sir, when that gets here?
That would be great. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Consent calendar. Ask the manager to read the consent calendar.
Mayor, I would like to request that number 11 be pulled for discussion from the consent calendar and moved to number nine on the action items, if I may. There's only one bid. I'd like to ask a few questions, staff.
Move to nine on the actions.
Yes.
I'd like to take this moment, just if everyone would mind. We've had a couple of deaths over our community of, of great people, and I would just like, right now, just a moment of silence for Charlie Tippett. He is an amazing man. We just had him honored a few meetings ago. I would like to take a silence for him since that has happened in between our last meeting and now. And I'd also like that silence to go 30 seconds, and I would also like to add Jan Poe, Mr. Ed Poe's wife passed away in her sleep yesterday.
Lovely lady.
So, very lovely. Two amazing people in our community. So if I could just take 30 minutes of your time for a moment of silence, just to remember them and all that they've done for Frankfurt.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item would be consent calendar. Commissioner, Commissioner Wissman asked that number 11 be moved to number nine under action items, so if there's no objections, we'll do that. And then after the commissioner, Sauer asks if we could, just the commission, if they would take a five-minute break?
After consent.
After consent, that's...
Any objections? Okay.
All right, first item is approval of the minutes from the December 9th work session and the December 16th regular meeting. The second item is the approval of a change order with Aitken's Excavating Company on the Franklin Mayor Project to reduce the contract amount by $16,912. Third item is approval of a time extension for the Franklin Mayor Project. The extension will change the completion date to March 31st, 2020, and will not affect the project cost. Fourth item is approval of a change order with Flynn Brothers Contracting on the Kentucky Avenue Interceptor Rehabilitation Phase 3 Project to reduce the contract amount by $70,203.67. Fifth item is approval of the mowing contract with Teas Long Care to perform mowing services for the Sewer and Parks Department. The sixth item is approval of the $40,000 payment to the Franklin County Property Valuation Administrator for the ser, for services provided related to the valuation of property and tax billings. Item seven is approval of the 2020 Aquatics Center rates. The only change will be an increase in the private-party rental rates, which will now be $475 and $600 for parties under and over 400 people respectively. Item eight is approval to apply for the NEA Artworks Grant for the installation of sculptures and murals in downtown Frankfurt. If awarded, the City of Frankfurt would be responsible for $43,000 in matching funds split between FY '21, FY '22 budget years. Item nine has been removed. Item 10 has been removed. Item 11 has been moved to action items. Item 12, approval to allow the Frankfurt Police Department to get started on the purchase and upfitting of two new vehicles to replace two police vehicles that were recently totaled in unrelated accidents, which were not the police's fault. Considering the immediate critical need, they will move forward with the purchasing process prior to the approval as a specific budget amendment. Item 13 is personnel actions. First is the appointment of Laura Dom, Public Works Transit, effective January 2nd, 2020, Transit Driver. Appointment of Jeffrey Smith, Public Works Transit, effective January 13th, 2020, Transit Driver. Promotion, Trey Troxel, Planning and Community Development, effective January 7th, 2020, Public Works Tech III to Neighborhood Inspector. Resignation of Anna Satterly, Public Works Transit Department, effective January 31st, 2020, Transit Driver. And also, there's a permission to make up to two conditional offers of employment and one alternate conditional offer of employment for the position of firefighter EMT recruit request. To make these conditional offers of employment is contingent upon successful completion of background medical, psychological, polygraph, and drug screen examinations by each candidate. Final offers will bring staffing for hazardous student employees to 83. Move to approve, mayor.
Move back Commissioner Tippett. Second by Commissioner Waldrich. Any discussions? Any discussion? Seeing in all its favor, signify by saying no. All voters opposed?
I want to the bathrooms and receive.
Thank you, Mayor Projan. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you, welcome.
The next item is action items. Well, first, the city clerk informed me that she tried to put the board appointments in the proper place, but for some reason, her computer, wait a minute. Okay, that's two things. At the same time, that could be a problem, but anyway, her computer, her program would not let her drag the board appointment up, so it's the reappointment of Mr. Jim Ashcraft to the Board of Ethics.
Move to approve, mayor.
Second by Commissioner Tippett. Second by Commissioner Waldrich. Any discussion? Seeing none? Clerk, please call the board.
Commissioner Waldrich?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes. Thank you. Thank Mr. Ashcraft.
I was in Florida playing golf.
That really worries me, though. It's that cheap thing. All right, anyway, action items. First reading on an ordinance resoning property located near the intersection. I'm not gonna read that one. The city attorney read it.
An ordinance rezoning property located near the... Oh, sorry. Located near the intersection of Darvishire Circle and Riverbend Road with the address of 101 Darvishire Circle and containing .85 acres, more specifically described as PVA map number 048000030.03 from Plaid Commercial District PC to Low Density Multifamily District RL. This ordinance approves the zone map amendment for the .85 acre property located at the intersection of Darvishire Circle and Riverbend Road with the address of 101 Darvishire Circle, and containing .85 acres, more specifically described as PVA map number 048000000030.03 from Plaid Commercial District to Low Density Multifamily District.
All right, it's had its first reading. Next would be first reading of the second order test. Have you read the title and summary of that one, please?
An ordinance amending the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances, Section 37.33 relating to mayor and commissioner's salary rates. This ordinance amends Section 37.33 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances to reflect the salaries of city-elected officials as of July 1st, 2019, and to clarify that salaries of city-elected officials shall be annually adjusted by the lesser of the annual salary adjustment granted to city employees per ordinance number 37.38, or the increase in the Consumer Price Index for the previous year as calculated by the Kentucky Department for Local Government.
Yes, Commissioner Waldrich. Thank you. Commissioner Waldrich.
I just wanted to speak on this. I didn't really speak on it last time because I was, I wasn't sure of what was going on or what have you, but I did want to speak on this to say, I don't think that it's so much trying to, well, we're not giving ourselves raises because no one's promised this position in November. So, my thing is that I think this, I appreciate you bringing it to the table. I think that it's something that it should be looked at as far as salaries, because in the past, our city commissioners, a lot of them, 99.9% of them, are usually retired and they have the salaries and things of that nature in order to bring in younger, more vibrant people with children and things of that nature to sit and have all of our community overreach. I think that there should be a, a, a salary that is comparable to that of a magistrate. And I want to say we're at a $17,000 thing right now, and, and I know that some people running for city commissioner are gonna give that back their salary, which is great, but I think we do that on a daily, as many events that we go to, many tickets that we go to, many things that we sponsor that the city doesn't sponsor for us. Within that, I'm giving my salary back, but I do think that we do need to think about this commissioners for the incoming commissioners coming in in November, whether we get elected or not, for a, for a salary that is comparable of that of a magistrate, which is 30-something thousand dollars. You're asking for the commissioners and the mayor to do so much for this city, and you're paying them pennies on a dollar for all the time and services. If you pay someone a salary that's worthwhile, they can spend more time going to meetings and doing more research on the things that concern Frankfurt. So I think this is something we do need to take a look at, and it's not about being selfish. It's about doing what's right so we can bring different people in of all ages, of all backgrounds, and give them opportunity to be city commission. Because as a single mom of two children, of course, salaries, you know, I have to have a full-time job on top of this or be able to save, which I did when I first came on. But I'm just saying, I think to allow younger people that have not retired and had that salary the opportunity to be city commission, I think we do need that to be a little bit more competitive to get some great people in for city commission. So, I vote that we do take, take this into consideration in raising that. I know you're retired and probably don't need a dime, and I'm okay with that, and Sauer, keep on handing that out, but I think there's young people out there that may need a salary.
May I piggyback to you? Commissioner, if you'd have waited two seconds, I'd have beat you to the punch on that.
Well, thank you.
And you'd have had some cover, city. I'd have given you some cover. Right, I do think it's, it's needed that we at least become in the same vicinity as the county. You know, and since I'm on my way out, I won't get a penny, all right? So I can lobby for this.
Hey, we maybe too.
But...
Speak for yourselves.
It, it seems to me that if you really want to attract the best and brightest candidates, there has to be some level of remuneration that reflects the, the amount of effort it takes to get elected. Okay? If any of you people have ever run for public office, and I think Commissioner Waldrich's point about young people is well-taken, love to have more young people in the process to better represent the board. I think that's a wonderful idea. So I, I would urge this board to look at a restructuring of the entire salary for this, for the commission, and I'm not gonna benefit from it, so I can say that. So we can attract the best and the brightest, and I'm not insinuating that we don't have the best and the brightest.
Thanks, Scott. You're still on the commission, Doug. Thank you for that support.
Mayor. I'll speak to that, and then I have several questions. I'll, I'll agree that it is very difficult to hold a, a job and, and do this position and, and do what's needed, and there are a lot of 16, 20-hour days at times prepping for phone calls and, and attended meetings and whatever else it may be. So that, but, but we don't do it for the, the salary.
Correct.
And I don't. You know, the form of government that we have, I, a couple of months back, had already, before this had even came up, pulled the, the comparable salaries of the city manager form of governments all across the state, and we're comparable, surprisingly, we really are. So I, I don't think, with our form of government currently, we are intended to be part-time positions, full-time, on, on full-time, but paid part-time.
Correct.
So I, I don't really want to explore changing the salary currently, but, but my, my bigger question, and maybe Ms. Ross, you can explain to us, you know, this, this ordinance was just amended in 2017...
It was.
Because of, of some of these issues. Are we, are we correcting through, through your proposal here all of those, those issues that have arose, you know, twice in the last two years?
Yes, we are. Honestly, this was, in 2017, the salary that had been there forever as we started implementing correctly what we were supposed to be doing, we realized that the salary amount that had been in the ordinance for many, many years, really it would be very helpful to us to go ahead and update that to reflect the most current numbers that we have so that it's clear going forward what we're doing. We also clarified it just to make sure, not so much for you all, but for future Boards of Commissioners, that we understand that it is the lesser of either the city employee raises or the constitutionally mandated Department for Local Government Consumer Price Index increase that the Board of Commissioners gives.
Could you explain a little bit of this, about the state mandate? I, I remember previously, 2017, the salary was listed in the ordinances like $8,000. And then it was, it had only been increased by the standard living cost adjustment for 20 years or something, but...
Actually, so the, the $8,000, there was one that referenced, and unfortunately, it still shows up as on, on the ordinance code, but it is officially repealed. It is an outdated ordinance that referenced statute, or that referenced salaries from years ago. So we noticed that was there. That happens with ordinances all the time when you have hundreds and hundreds, and we repealed it just to get rid of it, because it was confusing and had no effect whatsoever on the current salaries of city employees. So that is gone. The one that we're amending, just, it had salary rates from, I believe, 2010, and so we want to make clear that there have been adjustments, correct adjustments, and that we want to reflect the current numbers as they are. We can certainly amend that further going down the road, but at least at this point, we have a more accurate starting point going forward. So as of 2017, we were very clear on the need for, under state law, the Board of Commissioners to only receive salary increases, cost of living increases, that were less than or equal to an amount calculated by the Department for Local Government each year based on the Consumer Price Index. That is a constitutional limitation involved where we cannot change the base salary of elected officials while you are in office. If we wanted to change it for the next group, I believe the deadline is in May, so we would still have a few months if we wanted to do that. So we can't change the base salary while in office, but we can, per state law and interpretations of the Constitution, give cost of living increases as long as they don't exceed that amount calculated by DLG. That was a whole lot of talking. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Yes.
A little bit more. I always like to explain for the public when these things come up. We'd give, at the beginning of the year, we gave a 3% cost of living adjustment to all city staff. Because of state mandates, we're not allowed to give that full amount to ourselves. It was an appropriated amount that's by the Department of Local Government, right?
Is that how it, it worked? I, I would just ask, if you all don't mind, for Kathy to make sure I've correctly stated what's given.
So, we are not adjusting our current salaries whatsoever by this ordinance. We're correcting some language that was murky at best, and if we wanted to make any adjustment to the current commission's salary, it would not affect us. It'll be, we have to vote now for the next commission.
That is correct. We, we are trying to make sure that we are as in compliance with, with state law, and we are. We've been working hard to make sure that we are, as we possibly can be going forward. If we look back, you know, there, there are some issues involved, but the, the 3% going ahead, I'm sorry.
I, I was just gonna add that the DLG set that rate at 1.9 for the year 2020, so, or, excuse me, 2019. So last summer of 2019, when the commission voted for 3%, the maximum that could be awarded to the commission was that 1.9, because that's the lesser of the COLA or the DLG's amount. So that's what was issued.
Kathy?
Go ahead, Commissioner. Commissioner Sauer. In preparation for this meeting, I decided I would go back to our Facebook video of the work session involved, and it's quite different. As a matter of fact, Madam City Attorney, we were told at that time that actually through calculations, the amount that we were earning currently, 17,000 and 22,000, was actually an overpayment, more than we were supposed to get. That's on the video, and I don't know if it's in the minutes of the meeting or not, but that was clearly on the video.
I will let, so, that's part of the calculations that we've been trying to figure out, but I'm gonna let Keith go ahead.
That's what we're trying to correct.
Yeah.
If we were to pay you all based on, per the letter of 2017 ordinance change, it did not bring up the base salary from 2010 to 2017, so your starting point is back at 2010, then we start your cost of living increases, so probably $2,000 apiece. And clear intent was to keep that going, and the salaries go up each year by cost of living, and it's just the base salary number wasn't carried forward, so, so...
The spirit of the commu, of the commission at that time, two weeks ago, I feel, was to keep the salary at the, at the same amount. That's why I'm perplexed by the wording and the, in the first reading, saying to go ahead.
You all won't see any change in your check. This, this reading, just... The spirit of the commission at that time, two weeks ago, I feel, was to keep the salary at the same amount. That's why I'm perplexed by the wording and the, in the first reading, saying to go ahead.
You all won't see any change in your check. This reading just cleans up the way we've been applying it erroneously since you all started, the 2017 number. We've been applying it as the intent was, moving forward. What you're going to do tonight will not change anything on what you're making right now.
Well, but future members of the commission will benefit from a COLA.
No.
And, no, they won't?
No, that was already in effect, that since 2010.
It doesn't mean we can't change what was already in effect.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, but you know, my position at that time, two weeks ago, as well as I thought in the majority of the commission, was that we would keep the same amount, period.
Okay.
Yes.
That's obvious.
That's what, that's the way I interpreted the conversation.
Without a cost.
Two weeks ago.
Without a cost of living. That's a change from what we have been doing and would require a vote from you all if you wanted to do that.
I believe it's going to be required that that has to, that's mandated.
I'm sorry.
I believe that's mandated.
It is a state mandate.
We just can't.
No, no, that's just that, that, just jump in.
Since we.
It's a, there's a constitutional provision that deals with salaries, compensation of city and county, municipal and county officers, which actually sets a cap of seven thousand two hundred dollars. But again, that was back when the Constitution was written, so the Fump versus Melikan case in the forties actually applied the rubber dollar theory, which further said that Department of Local Government would, the law says, will calculate on an annual basis. They'd use the December CPI because the December CPI is pretty much the average annual CPI.
Yes.
And that is a mandated amount that is required for elected officials to accept that. Now, it doesn't mean you can't give it back in some other form, but you have to accept the pay.
I haven't read it that way, Mayor, but I will certainly go back and take a hard look at it.
We have, we have time.
Yeah, we do.
For the commission to take a look at it.
Sure.
And to review the video of two weeks ago and bring it up in our February meeting.
Absolutely.
I'd feel much more comfortable about that.
That's fine.
If I'm wrong, I'm wrong.
I just, I just want to be exceptionally clear, though, that the amendment that's on the table tonight, we have been following the clear intent of what we wanted to do in 2017, which was just a cleanup measure to ensure we were acting legally. We've been following the intent of that. We're trying to make the ordinance match the intent, the language match the intent. That's, that's all this is.
And I'm just, and I'm just as clear, and I don't mean to be argumentative with you, but the clear conversation was that we were technically making more than we should have been making according to those calculations.
Okay. Let us go back and take.
That's what I think.
And, and what is the directive from the commission? What would you all like us to do?
I would like for you to do some research on reasonable-based salaries for commissioners across the board.
Okay.
So that we can make that decision for our 2021 commissioners coming in for that to be feasible.
Okay.
Across the board.
Did you get that, Ms. HR? Is that clear?
Commissioner Don.
We haven't, I'm not saying we approved it, I'm saying, does she understand it?
But I think that's different than what the writing.
You have a question for Commissioner Walters?
Mayor Protam.
Do you want to answer a question?
Yes.
Perhaps you would want to make it effective, actually, July 1st for the new budget, rather than wait till January.
We can't do it for, we have to make, it will not start until new commissioners come over. If we were to get an increase or anything, and we prove that, in the readings that I have spoken with and I've read, we cannot start July 1 because then that would affect our salary, and we can't do anything to affect our salary. We can only affect the salary of the new incoming commissioners. As to saving, that's why I would like to make this change now for the new commissioners coming in, though I'm running for reelection, I would love to get back in, but that doesn't mean I'm getting back in.
Commissioner, I stand corrected, you're right.
Let me make just a quick point. Section, section 161 of the Constitution is the one that talks about the compensation can't be changed, and then section 246 is the section that talks about the salaries for city officials, elected.
Correct.
Officials, and then KRS chapter 64 will deal with all the actual law on payment.
How, I wish.
Is that clear, Mr. Moat?
It sure is. That's what that big, thick book is.
We're good.
Mayor, may I ask, or may I move that we table this first reading then until a February work session to clarify any questions?
We just did not have a second.
Yeah, you already read it, so I can't bring, I can't not do that, unfortunately.
So we could put it in the vote?
You just can't, just don't have to schedule for a second reading.
Right, okay.
That would be the cleanest way to do it.
Absolutely.
But what I'm asking for a directive for staff to do does not concern the language here. The correcting of the reading is just to verify and to clear any language. What I'm asking is a directive does not affect, this needs to change, regardless if there's a directive of increase or not. So that, I think there's a little bit of confusing there. This should go forward to correct the verbiage of what is in our ordinance. Then on top of that, we would like to see a directive on what would be a competitive salary for city commissioners coming in in 2021.
Mayor Fudd.
Base, competitive base.
I did request those comparables from DLG or KLC just a few months back. I'll be happy to pass that along to Laura to review.
We have some, but we will always take whatever's available, so please.
When did you ask those? What was the date?
I don't remember, fact, November, maybe.
So roughly six, four months ago, six months?
December.
Okay.
Mayor, are we in order?
You are in order. Just researching something. What would you want, Commissioner?
I just want to know if staff is clear on that.
I'm not.
And did we have three votes for that directive?
Make sure that she knows, that the staff knows.
I'm not clear. Are we to bring this ordinance back for a second reading or?
I don't think they're ready for it yet.
Okay.
Is it, I want it on the next agenda, or you want to wait until we get more information?
I prefer to clarify all the questions that have come up tonight and discuss it in our work session.
How many people, just last question, how many people are in favor of clarifying it before it goes back on the agenda?
Further information, so if that's the question. I'm for further information and work by the city attorney.
I'm going to do a simple, even simpler for staff's reading. How many people want this on the next agenda in February?
May I ask a question on that, for clarity?
Absolutely.
Ms. Ross?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you write the verbiage here in regards to us at our last meeting for this to be as an ordinance written here, and you stand by your work that you've put in for us to move forward, and anything else can change at the next voting meeting, if need be?
I do absolutely stand by the work that I did on this ordinance because it's a clarification ordinance and doesn't change anything.
Correct.
Now, but if you all either instructed us to do something different and we didn't quite get the message, which happens a lot in the confusion in meetings, and we will happily go back, do whatever is required, we just need very clear direction from the board.
I think we have a first reading, don't we?
We have had a first reading.
We have had a first reading.
We got a first reading, let's move on, and a directive.
To proceed with the second reading or?
That's what the staff needs to know, so that's why I was asking, how many people want that on in the February?
Let's do it.
I need two. No?
Do you like to give a word?
I'm going to go with what, I'm trying to be happy, I'm leaving, so I just want to make.
Can I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Can we leave the second reading, can we leave the decision till after the February work session, and we can put this on as an item for discussion? And then if you all want to proceed with the second reading or?
That's fine.
Yes.
Good compromise.
Okay.
That's why we heard her.
Watch the video.
No, you were correcting the video, actually. That was me, I thought it was a joke, but.
What's in there? Item three?
Let me get that again, I'm doing a lot of research here.
Local foods.
One down.
We're at local foods, right?
We're at local foods. This is requesting the city commission adopt the local foods, local places planned created by community through the efforts of the LFLP Federal Technical Assistance Team and the local steering committee. And again, this was from the EPA meeting we had in 2017. For 2018, actually. Any questions?
Move to approve?
Second, I can hear you second. Commissioner Tippett, second by Commissioner Tippett in discussion.
Commissioner Wissittipit.
Discussion, seeing a court place call.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Is Connie still here?
Yes.
She's right here. Right in front of you.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes, I said. I'm sorry.
Can we fill his water bottle?
I'm sorry.
Any comments? Or we're open.
Mayor May.
Yes, it's an option. Okay, now, Commissioner, wish to speak, please let me know, do you want to send anything? Next item would be the renewal of Sustainable Strategies DC contract for 2020. If there's any questions on this?
Here.
Go ahead. Move to approve, moved by Commissioner Sauer.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tippett, a discussion.
Do we have a tone?
I thought I heard somebody's mouth open.
Yes, of course.
And I only mean because I heard it open. I have, like, musician ears.
Just wanted to point out that while it's costly, almost six thousand dollars a month for this service, there's potential of over eight million dollars that have been brought in in grant funds in the last three years, 2018, 19, and projected into 20, so it's a, really an asset, I believe, to continue this contract and work towards funding initiatives that we can't possibly do on our own. You know, eight point two nine two million is nearly a third of our annual budget, about a fourth.
Okay. Any other questions? We had a motion in a second. Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, item is approved. We're going to move number five to the special meeting that y'all don't know about that we're going to do on this Thursday at one o'clock.
I did not approve it. I, right?
I was going to say, y'all didn't know about it, we were going to ask you all later. So we're going to just take number, staff asked if we'd take this off tonight since we.
Oh, so we're taking it off?
For tonight.
That's fine.
Is there really going to be a special meeting on Thursday?
We're going to ask you all when you can do it.
I can't do Thursday.
Okay, it's not going to be Thursday.
I'll be traveling.
It won't be Thursday at one o'clock.
Are you going to Florida?
No, I'm coming back from Nashville.
All right.
Next item, number six, Leslie Morris Park Historic Designation.
Do we, need some kind of a motion, Mayor? I move to, go ahead.
I was just going to say, the only reason this is back on the agenda is because we, I do understand we discussed this, and you all provided some direction at the work session, however, there was some confusion, and this is just a clarification.
So we need an official motion?
Yes, please.
Mayor, do I have the floor?
You do, go ahead.
I hope I can word this appropriately, Ms. Ross.
I'm listening.
I move that we allow the appropriate staff to send out a request for proposals for a consultant to assist in the preparation of an application with the Kentucky Heritage Council to place the entirety of Leslie Morris Park on the National Historic Register.
Motion by Commissioner Tippett.
Second.
Mayor. I'd actually like to ask to edit the motion, Mr. Tippett, since I do these, it would maybe be more preferable to deem whatever portions the consultant deems appropriate. We may not be able to put the entirety of the.
I disagree with that. No, my motion stands. I don't, forgive me, Commissioner, but I'm not sure you support the proposition, so I'm going to stand by my motion.
Okay, just for a point, if the commissioner wants to amend that motion, they may amend it. I make a motion to amend it, but it would have to be voted on. Okay. Any more discussion?
Can we have a restatement of the motion, please?
Yes. I'll try to do it again, is that okay?
Thank you.
I just got it written, good.
I got, y'all's got to see this one. I want to watch this. All right. I move to allow appropriate staff to send out a request for proposal for a consultant to assist in the preparation of an application with the Kentucky Heritage Council to place Leslie Morris Park on the National Historic Register in its entirety.
Okay, they got, I make a motion to.
I got to do it again?
Pass it over, please.
I think we've got it.
And I go too fast, Ms. Ross?
I think we've got it between the two of us, but I do, allow a, something of this nature, allow appropriate staff to sit down RFP for a consultant to assist in preparation of an application for National Historic Register designation to place the entirety of Leslie Morris Park on the National Historic, something along those lines.
Close enough.
Okay.
Did you get the period at the end?
Not yet.
Mayor, if you can read my handwriting, buddy, I'll tell you what.
Does that mean we can't have a bike tour for Historic Hill?
That's for, to be.
You know what, I'll even second that for Mr. Tippett.
Commissioner Sauer?
He does support.
Did he?
I didn't hear him.
Look at there.
It's a bit meaningless anyway, but.
Why is it meaningless, Commissioner?
It has no teeth.
I saw what you wrote on the other page.
Well, he might as well not vote for it, he's going to say, I apologize.
I guess he's stating his opposition to the motion.
Not at all.
So I guess my question, Commissioner, is do you support making it on the register or do you not support it?
Commissioner Wisman, do you wish to answer Commissioner Tippett's question?
We'll fully support it to be on the National Register. The teeth of the National Register is essentially a gold star that has no requirements unless federal money is spent to indicate or impact a historic resource, but I'll let that go. We'll not get into the weeds.
May I?
Commissioner, Mayor.
We are seeking the moral high ground, Commissioner, okay? We are fully cognizant of the meaning of the designation. Understood.
Guys are insane. I should say, well.
Anyone else?
No, no.
Clerk fix one.
Standing out of this one.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes, it was in a big view. It's all good. Motion passes. Next item, discussion on city insurance agent record change from roading insurance group to Chanel and Helge Insurance.
Should we take a minute break?
You can have a break if you want. Oh, okay, so I ask a second.
This was a commissioner-added item.
Who added it?
There was three commissioners who requested this on the agenda.
No, that wasn't me.
I would let any of them speak to.
So excuse me.
Commissioner Sauer? I think it would be appropriate, especially since the principals are here, to ask them to make their presentations. Rotering, since they have the contract at this time, Mike O'First and Chanel told Mike O'Second.
Would be appropriate for me also to read some excerpts from our 90-day review.
Sure.
I think roading rate insurance can.
Thank you very much. We have several of our staff members here that also may want to speak as well after me to talk about different points of things of what I wanted to address. Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sue Porter. Yes, I'm with Roding Insurance. I wanted to just touch on three points that I wanted to talk about, and these are not necessarily even insurance related, but there are some points of some things that I think are important that I'd like to bring out before the council. My first point is that our staff, I think, has been talked about like we are not local and there's a lot of local people within our, with our insurance staff. Myself, I am local. I grew up in Frankfurt. I attended church here. I went to elementary, middle school and graduated high school from here. I played flute in the high school band. I went to my first movie at the Capitol Theater. I got married here. I raised my son here. Unfortunately, I have my daughter buried here. My father owned three businesses in downtown Frankfurt. When I attended Second Street School, my friends and I walked from school across the singing bridge to my father's furniture store on Main Street, sometimes stopping at the White Light Restaurant for a Coke or coming down to St. Clair to the drugstore at the corner of Broadway and St. Clair where Seraphine's is now and getting a cherry Coke at the fountain. I attended my nephew's baseball games at State Stadium. We went swimming with my family and friends at Juniper Hills Park and Pool. I've shopped at the Catherine Shop in Hudsonstown all my life. I went skating on the wooden floor of the old YMCA and boy, now after Mr. Harness's comments, it seems like it's a lot, that's been a long time ago. I remember when the new YMCA opened and my son used to go swimming there with the school class. I loved going to McGee's Bakery growing up and Dixie Cream Donuts. I have a major sweet tooth and now I love going to Bee's Bakery and Poppy's. My mom, at some points in my youth, was a stay-at-home mom. Another time, she helped my dad in his businesses and she also worked for state government where she retired from Human Resources Department. She, along with my sisters and their families and aunts and uncles and cousins, all still live here in Frankfurt. I was a daddy's girl growing up. My dad died suddenly at age 49 of a heart attack. He was what I envisioned to be one of the first house flippers. At the time of his death, in addition to his furniture store and restaurants, he owned 19 houses in Frankfurt, most of them in downtown South Frankfurt, some in Bell Point, couple of those going up the hill by the cemetery and the old health department. All of those houses were in various states of disrepair. Couple of them were condemned. After he closed the furniture store at night, he would head to one of those houses and try to get in a couple hours' work and my mom would put us in the car and take us there to take him some dinner and go help pick up some trash or sweep the floors or something in some of those houses. I'll never forget, when he passed, the State Journal wrote a little story about him mentioning his entrepreneurial spirit. Pardon me, it's kind of emotional. The last time, the last line of the article said, "Not many Bill Marshals come down the pike. We will miss him." I was very proud of him and I'm very proud to be his daughter. He loved his town and he was determined to build a successful life for himself and our family. I've been driven to carry on his entrepreneurial spirit and his strong work ethic that was instilled in me and his love of Frankfurt, which is also my love of Frankfurt. This is my town as well. Additionally, we have many staff members who call the city of Frankfurt their home. Many of them are here tonight and many of them are currently working with the city and your staff. Many of those staff members are property owners like myself. We have staff who have served in roles, working for county governments, elected public offices, served on many nonprofit boards and associations, and their families are civically involved and have been for their entire lifetimes. Roding is also a licensed business in the city of Frankfurt. We're active in the community. We serve on boards and sponsor charitable fundraisers to help those who are most vulnerable in our community. All of our roots run deep and this is our town as well. That's the first thing I wanted to say to you. I also wanted to say that I know that when we were here in October and we talked about 90-day review and that you guys wanted to ask the city manager to do a 90-day review of some of the things that we have done on behalf of the city. I believe we've served you well in just those short 90 days and I'm hoping that you all will allow us to continue on. Never represented anyone for just 90 days. I think if we've done all that we've done in the last 90 days, think of what we can do over the rest of the year. We've started a lot of things already with safety committees and put some things in place that we want to finish out. We want to continue on to help make the city the best that it can be for your, in your, with your safety practices and your risk management services. I think some of the things that were put in the 90-day review are, they're just touching on them, they're just touching on some of the things that we've done. We work with your staff daily. The last thing I'd like to say, and I think the most important thing, is that our agency, Roding, is the right choice to represent the city for your insurance and risk management needs. Over the last 30 years, I've built my business and my reputation providing insurance to governmental and nonprofit entities. I do not write personal insurance or commercial business retail insurance. That's not where my experience lies. If you have a heart condition and you need someone that has experience and expertise to work on your heart, do you work, do you go to your general practitioner and ask them to do the heart surgery? What if there's not a cardiologist that can do that in the city of Frankfurt? You would go somewhere else. That's somewhere else that someone's got the expertise to be able to work on your heart and repair and do what's needed. The city has exposures that are unique to the operations of government. You have law enforcement, fire, and EMS, and public works, and parks and rec, to name just a few. Your exposures are much different than personal insurance and commercial and small business. We're the largest agency representing city governments, counties, libraries, fire and ambulance services, conservation districts, extensions, and other nonprofit special districts within the state of Kentucky, many in Frankfurt and Franklin County. We understand and have the experience and the resources to best respond to the unique needs and exposures of the city. Many years ago, I went into premature labor with twins and I went to King's Darters Hospital. And I don't think my son would be alive today if they had kept me there. They sent me to where the care that I could get the best care, and that was to Co-Sares Children's Hospital in Louisville. And because of that, they made the right decision and didn't just keep me there because they were the local that tried to do what the experts in Louisville could do for me at that time. I pray that you will make the same type of decision and look at this as what is in the best interest of the city and who can provide the services that are needed to take this, to the city to the next level as it regards your insurance and your risk management practices. Sometimes we just have to admit, and as I did earlier, that I don't have the experience in personal lines and commercial insurance, that others do have more experience and expertise and that they, there are other choices to provide the needed care and services that the city needs. No disrespect is intended to anyone else in the words that I'm saying. I have ultimate respect for the former, your former agent, but we were selected in a proper procedure and we have done everything that's been asked of us. I believe beyond even, we are sharing our expertise and our opportunities that we have for the city to help you in ways that I don't believe you've received in the past. And I'm asking you to continue working with us and to continue allowing us the opportunity to provide the services that you need. Thank you.
Commissioner, you, do you mind answering questions from commissioners?
And may I call you by your first name?
Sue, please, yes.
Okay. I want you to be at ease. This is not an inquisition. I guess I have a couple of questions, okay? So, so what you're telling me is that your physical structure of your business is not located in Frankfurt?
No, it's not.
Okay. Then my question, my next question is, is what about occupational taxes on your employees? Do we receive their occupational taxes?
You do, yeah.
When were you at Second Street? You know, I mean, I'm sorry, let me rephrase the question.
Did I not give that away?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Can you, did you have my wife at Second Street for art?
I honestly don't.
Ms. Tippett was the art teacher. I'm just trying, can you tell me who the, who was the principal?
I'm sorry, I don't remember. I'm, I'm serious. It's been a long time ago. You put me on the spot now. I have to really think about that.
Kindergarten.
I didn't even go to kindergarten.
It was Miss Mary.
I didn't go to kindergarten. My younger sister did. Her sister did not.
So some of us are concerned about, and I want, I want to say this in a non-threatening way. Some of us are concerned about putting our local business at a competitive disadvantage. Okay, you chose to move your business to a larger market and that's quite all right. Okay, I've got no problem with that. That's capitalism. But we have to weigh, you know, seriously how much support we give to our locally housed businesses. And this is the friction we're having right here in this discussion, I think. Okay, so this board's going to have to come to some conclusion, okay? And I don't, I have no doubt that you're a fine insurance business person, okay? I've got no doubt. But we have to weigh these intricacies, Commissioner, for, for what's best for the community. And I, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Did any other commissioners have any questions? Thank you very much.
Would you like for other staff members to come up?
Certainly, ma'am.
Jennifer, do you want to take it off now? I've got a cold, Commissioner.
My name is Michael Turner and I'm a resident here in Frankfurt, Kentucky, and in full disclosure, I'm an employee of Roding Insurance Group. I'm standing up to here right now, not necessarily as a employee of Roding Insurance Group. I'm standing up here as a citizen and a person who sat in the very seats that you're sitting right now. And I absolutely understand the need to go with a local company sometimes. I understand that. But what you all have to decide, what the real question here, I think, for the commission to decide, is what's the responsible decision for our taxpayer dollars? If you look at that 90-day report, which I encourage all of you all to look that over, there's not another insurance agency in the Commonwealth of Kentucky that's going to come in and provide that type of service in 90 days. And so I want you all to really think about this because for the city, the insurance is a big deal. This is all of our community's liabilities right here. And so I'm asking you as a citizen, as a taxpayer, and as a person who sat where you sat, to think about what is the responsible decision for our taxpayers. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's David Brooks and I'm proud to work with Sue and our roading team. And I just want to talk a little bit about what we've done over this past 90 days with the city and for the city and the fine folks that we've had the pleasure to work with over the last three months. First of all, we normally are not asked to come in and brag about what we do for our clients. You know, we're, we humbly serve our public entities. We come in with their best interests in mind whenever we insure them. My job as a risk manager and a risk control professional is to work with our cities and counties and our school systems and try to do the best we can to send every employee home safe. That's our firefighters, our sewer guys, our police department, our parks and rec folks. And, you know, when Sue, when we acquired this, the city of Frankfurt and had the honor to be able to go to work with you all and your employees, I took, she tasked with me and said, "Take care of this account." And I took that very serious and I said, "Don't worry, Sue. We're going to do stuff for this city that's never been done before. We're going to go in, we're going to meet with their management teams, we're going to meet with department heads, we're going to look at loss information and where we're having claims in every department, we're going to set up a safety committee, we're going to offer training, and we're going to go to work in that city and you don't have to worry about the city of Frankfurt." And we came in and we came to work and we met Katie and your chiefs and Keith and Jennifer and all of your staff, Ms. Kathy. All of these folks have been wonderful to work with. And we came in and we sat down with every one of them and we reviewed every claim and we cleaned up open claims and we re-categorized claims that had been reported under different departments. And we went to work and we went to every facility in this city and I couldn't begin to go through, and I'm not, I'm not here to try to tell you all the great things that we've done, but I would hope that your staff, who you trusted to work with us and say, "Go to work with these folks," and they have, I would think that they would tell you that we have gone above and beyond and stepped up to the plate and honored our end of the deal in servicing and making sure that we got the ball rolling in the right way in the risk management and safety and insurance programs in this city. So we've met with your department heads many years and what I could tell in meeting with them is that a lot of the department heads, not to diminish anything that's been done in the past, they had not seen claims reports like we were able to provide with our database and all the stuff that we're able to provide with where we're having people having claims, liability, property, workers' compensation. So we sat down with them and we talked about what they wanted. What can we do for you to help you improve risk management in the city of Frankfurt? It wasn't just a insurance question. What we do is not, it isn't just placing insurance policy. It's come in and figure out how we can prevent injuries and claims in the city of Frankfurt. And that's what this is, and that's why I'm passionate about this. So it's more than just placing a policy. It's more than where your office is. It's who's going to commit to doing the best job for the employees in the city of Frankfurt. And I feel that we have backed that up. So you've entrusted these folks to work with us and do our job. I feel like we've done it. If we hadn't, I think they would tell you that they sold us something that they didn't back up. But I feel like we've done, hopefully Keith and them would back us up and say that we've done our proactive work in working with the city of Frankfurt. So I just, you know, to piggyback on Sue, I feel like we're just getting started. We've got your Second City Safety Committee meeting next Friday. And if some of you would want to come sit in on that city and see the discussion around your departments and the folks that have been tasked to work with us to promote safety and training in the city of Frankfurt, I think you'd be very impressed with the people that have been appointed to work with me and my team. So I'm happy to be up here. I'm willing to answer any questions you've got about what we've done. The one thing I will tell you is shortly after we went to work, after we met with every department head, we called the Kentucky League of Cities and we said, "These folks are getting it done. They're doing a lot more than what you think they're doing." And they said, "Well, let's meet. We need to increase some points on this scorecard and we could save them $15,000 or $20,000." So we came over here and we sat at this table and we went through the whole risk management scorecard that KLC does. And after we sat here for two days and toured every facility in the city of Frankfurt, you know what they came back with? Five points, 20, 17 grand. And that's, I'm not even worried about that. That just allowed us to brag on you. And so what we did is we went to bat for you and this city and what your employees are doing out here to promote safety and risk management. We saved you money. We raised your profile with them and made you look good. We were proud to do it because I was proud to meet with all these department heads over here and the work that they're doing in this city in risk management and safety. And they backed it up and we backed it up. And that's what we've done. And I'm proud to stand up here and take any of it, but we earned this thing, I think, three months ago and we're just getting started.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Do commissioners have any questions for Mr. Brooks? You're the, and you're the actual manager.
One of this team. I'm the risk manager and work with Keith and Jennifer and Ms. Kathy and our job is to help run your safety and risk management program. Sue places the insurance and her folks, they're on the phone every day with your people, updating vehicles, property. Another thing, I know Sue didn't stay. We added, when we found out, the Fire Training Institute wasn't insured under the policy. She was able to get coverage for the fire, you know. We're just now starting to determine little nitpick things. This is a big insurance undertaking and we're just getting started and we're finding out little things. But I can promise you this, that everybody over there in these two rows are looking out for you in your best interest and love working with your people. And I mean that. This isn't just a insurance policy. It's what we do every day with people. We protect people and firefighters and police officers and we take it serious. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did somebody else?
Thank you for pushing it off. Except for it wasn't 17,000, it was 37,000 in savings for the safety scorecard.
Okay, thank you. He might want to go first from the Shenandoah folks.
How many presenters?
Is anybody else going to present with you or just Commissioner Tippett?
I'm, I would say my friend probably like to speak.
Yeah, we, I'm just trying to have an idea.
I'm sorry.
Just an idea of how many people are speaking.
How many folks are going to be speaking too? Okay.
But you're not limited, just.
You're not, yeah.
Yeah, I just first want to address his last statement that the institute wasn't insured and that's not correct. It was insured. We have a certificate of insurance from the League of Cities and memos and emails about this institute being insured. So I'm not sure where he got that information. Thank you to the city commission for your awareness of local business and taking the time to understand the importance of your insurance. If it wasn't for the support of our city commissioners, thank you all, and our mayor, thank you. We would not be here tonight. Thank you to our friends who have supported us. I had no idea how strong the support was in this community for local business until we went through this process. I have received phone calls, emails, letters, texts. It's, it's really truly been amazing. This past year, city staff decided they wanted new eyes to review the insurance policies. It took 54 years of tweaking, changing, updating, and going through claims to provide the best coverage for the city, for the city and its constituents. Our approach is genuine, not to take advantage when we see an opening. We look at each department and coverage individually. Please recognize there is a reason for every coverage on your policy. Our relationship with the Kentucky League of Cities has been an excellent one for the last 19 years. In 2018, we were able to negotiate terms to stabilize rates going forward and keep increases below 3%. You may not know, but we have held safety committees, received great discount results on the city's scorecard, and brought your premium down to $700,000 from a time when it was over $1 million. But we were working with different directors. We've had a lot of transition and it has, you know, possibly they haven't seen some of the things that we have done the last 54 years. But we also have been here with expertise and experience for a very long time and earned that, not in just three months or to meet the 90-day requirement that was put on them. Our local knowledge of Frankfurt is a key in providing an ease of doing business, knowing what issues can arise, knowing what places are weaknesses and what places shine. We have dedicated our two most knowledgeable staff to work with the city over the years, people you all know on a first-name basis. Our care of you is important because we see you every day. We care about our reputation in this community. We care how your claims are handled and how our citizens are treated in claims. The city is not one of many municipalities and schools and libraries that we insure. You are our number-one municipality. Does an out-of-town agent feel the responsibility that your local business does? When roading suggests you lower the injury coverage on your auto policy, do they understand that that affects the care of your employees and their families? Does their $4 per car savings help a city's family, a city employee's family when they're hurt in an accident? Does roading know the sewer issues in Frankfurt as we do? They suggest claim deductibles, but can the city budget for multiple $5,000 deductibles or would you prefer a fixed cost with no deductible? The process has shown that roading offered no beneficial changes to the policy that would be any different than the work Cheltenham Hoag has done for 54 years. We have been a trusted, valuable, constant resource who has transitioned through multiple city managers and leaders. We have always negotiated the best coverage for the city. Roding has simply raised your deductibles, added unnecessary coverage, and lowered coverages to show evidence of the need for a new agent. Cheltenham Hoag is a local business based here since 1904. Would you like local preference given to a business that employs our citizens, supports our community, and is minutes away any time of day when you need service or help with claims? It's important to support our local businesses that in turn support our local economy. Our goal is to work together with our community. We feel we can work with you and the city staff if we're given the privilege. And I've sat here through a lot of meetings and listened and, you know, you receive so many requests from local, but local groups and that needs your support and you want to invest in local ideas and feels and innovators. And, you know, we're here too. So, would you want, I mean, are you looking to invest in an agent from out of town? You know, if the Humane Society from Lexington came to you and asked for $2 million, that would be absurd. But what's happening is you're trying to invest in your local economy and that's also us. So, I hope that, you know, we can answer any questions. My dad is here and Barbara, our office manager and who has worked on your account for over 45 years. Could there be any more expertise on the matter than these two people? So, if he wants to speak?
Sure.
He's come all the way back from Florida for this meeting.
Oh, my.
Yes.
I have been in Florida and I have a wife who's physically handicapped and so weather causes a problem with her. So, we spend about January, February, and some of March there. When the weather gets better here, then we do come home. But I'm on the phone continuously and deal with customers.
Even though we know, will you just?
My name is Granville Cobble, Cheltenham Hoag, live at 1032 Collins, down the street from you.
Allegedly.
And around the corner from another one. But at any rate, what we've done over the years, for instance, the safety committee, we had a safety committee and we reviewed and we went through losses and we did everything. And we had, there was a person that was assigned that job along with some human resources, the human resources job. And when he left the office, the city manager at that time chose not to continue the safety committee. That was that city manager's decision. And when he chose not to do that, then we did lose the 3% that you would get for having a safety committee on your overall premium. But that was, that was a knowledgeable thing and it happened under Ken Thompson's timeframe. And so, you know, and then when we talked with future city managers, they didn't choose to go in to doing that. They didn't, they found reasons not to do it. But at any rate, that was, that was the safety committee. And we would love, I mean, there's no problem. We would love to have that safety committee back. And we, we did have, for a long time, we had losses with ambulances and backing up and different claims. And so, we went through, we brought in the Kentucky League of Cities and they taught classes about driving and backing. Those, those worked and we stopped having those. The, the Cheltenham Hoag has been here. Mr. Hoag was in the YMCA. He helped raise the funds to build the existing YMCA. I was the president and I helped raise the fund to build the addition. And we do work in Frankfurt. And they, my children and Mr. Harville also work in, serve in Frankfurt. And we would, we would like to keep it. Once upon a time, when, when the city manager said he wanted new eyes to look at it, some 15 years ago, we had, we asked the city to employ a outside person who had a license to come in and to review and make it, and give advice to the city, in which he did come in and the city did pay him. And he came in and he did a complete review, two months here. And so, at the end of the two months, there were a few things that we had wanted to happen and we wanted to decrease the liability. We, we asked a year ago to increase the liability. But again, but we, he suggested that we do and we did. And there were some other things that we needed to do and he had some suggestions and we did those. But at any rate, there are ways to have new eyes look at things. But when we, when we had the RFQ, the only, the only people on that RFQ that did the review were city employees who worked for Keith Parker. And so, in all honesty, Mr. Parker got to make the decision on where this was going. And, and to this day, I regret that that happened. Everybody was under basically his thumb. And there was nobody on the city, on the city commission that served on that review committee. And I do think in the future that some city commissioners needs, if there's going to be a review of that nature, then the city commissioner needs to serve on that. And I do think that local preference, after 43 years of taking care of the city, that the knowledge that we would have in our direct contracts with major carriers, Travelers, Liberty Mutual, Kentucky League of Cities, and One Beacon, which is an Australian company, but they are large insurers of municipalities. And we've used them and, and they've bid on the city's insurance. And we've given those, that information to the city managers and made the decision based on what was fair and what was reasonable and what was good for the city. And that's been our, that's been our plight for many years. And we would like to keep the city of Frankfurt or in this case, have it back. We still do flood policies and the bond and other things that we do for the city. We still do in those, although there have been letter of records that will delete those as time goes by. So, but we like to keep the insurance and we'd like to continue to serve the city and the city of Frankfurt. Thank you.
Any questions? Granville, ask us a few questions, sir.
Mr. Tibbeton, after you're on.
I know you're a Frankfurt High School alumnus, are you not?
Oh, yes.
What year did you graduate?
67.
1967.
About John Sire's age.
You're actually a little bit younger.
I was going to say.
Your family has a long history of charitable giving in this community.
Born and raised. My grandfather was a doctor.
So, did, yes. Did your, did your family help support, financially support the George Wolfe event?
Yes.
Yes.
And it was a substantial amount, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And bourbon on the banks and...
Bourbon on the banks. When did you receive notice relative to your contribution to the George Wolfe event that you would no longer be receiving our contract?
It doesn't, I can't even, I don't even know because we would have supported George Wolfe's program anyway. What an amazing man.
Right.
So...
So, and I served with Polly on the Frankfurt Independent Edge of Schools Education Foundation, right? We, she were colleagues there, right?
And she also was on the Parks Board.
Were on the Parks Board. And you guys, as a family, contributed to the Frankfurt Independent Schools Education Foundation as well?
Multiple times.
I apologize. Have to enforce the rules. I can't let you keep asking too many questions because it's, it's getting close to cross-examination. I know it's not your intent, but I have to enforce the rules.
I'm just trying to probe us for authenticity, Mayor.
It's okay. If, I'm trying to think, I'll do be helpful.
Okay. If I, if, I tell you what, why don't I take a stab at the question and you can, you can ask me to reword it, okay?
I get shocked by the city attorney every time that she's going to think. It's like, I'm...
Am I out of order, Mr. Solicitor?
Out of order.
Are my questions out of order?
It's not out of order. It's just, we don't do cross-examination.
No, no, we do, it's just the general, the general rule that we try to enforce.
So, I apologize.
So, asking for factual information is to cross-examination? It's not my intent to cross-examine. I apologize here.
And...
Do you feel cross-examined?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Let me say this. If, if the speaker is open, I'm going to let it go. If you're okay. I just need to clarify because if Donald...
Born and raised here and he's, he's, couldn't have a question.
You can continue. Thank you.
Do you want to speak?
That's, just to, just to clarify, that's something we do every time there's a set of questions. It wasn't particular to anyone.
Oh, yes, not particular.
And as the speaker agrees to it, that's perfectly...
Well, let, let me stipulate and state the record. I am not cross-examining you.
Thank you.
I'm trying to draw a case out here of empirical data over time.
Well, this, Mr. Cobble said it's okay to ask you a question.
Okay, okay, okay.
As long as that's, that's perfectly good.
So, are there any other examples of charitable giving throughout history that your family has performed?
My father was the architect of the Frankfurt YMCA and he didn't charge for it. He served on, playing his own board for 15 years. I don't know why, but at any rate, he did that and obviously there's no pay there. I have served on three boards for, in Frankfurt as president or so forth for 30 years. They all serve on boards for their term. That's, it's our, our whole life has been Frankfurt and Frankfurt's boards and nonprofits and...
We have two, just right here, one of our, we, the chamber, who we work so closely with, hospice.
So, we can just stipulate, we can just stipulate a long, a long history of charitable giving of, of investing back into the community, right?
Yes.
Okay.
We started, we started hospice of Frankfurt and then Anderson County and then Owen County and we started that.
Mayor, I have, I have one editorial comment and I'm going to, and I'm going to cease and desist.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
You know, my purpose here is to establish an authenticity, okay? And we used to have an old saying back when I was in school, you know, especially at Frankfurt High, you know, "In, in of, and from Frankfurt" makes you a Frankfortonian, okay? I'm through. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
No?
No, not, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Again, folks, it's never my intent to stop commissioners from asking questions, but just to enforce the rules so that when we get into a situation in another time, we don't set a precedence where I allowed it for, so I can't be accused of that.
I get it.
Because I do like you the best. You're my favorite.
No, I appreciate that, Mayor. I like what you're jokes.
We played in a band together, first band together, so, anyway.
What year was that, Mayor? 1976?
Your dad let us have the garage. We were a real garage band. Actually, no air conditioning on top in the attic of a garage. That was old school.
It was old school, right.
And he was a very good guitarist. The city manager wanted to ask. But let me also say this to be fair too, since I want to give either side a chance in a minute to come back up and, and answer or respond to any thing that was said, sort of a rebuttal opportunity, just so I can be fair. Do you want to say something?
I'd like to ask the commissioner if any of you all think there's anybody out there in the back room that's under my thumb. Do you all truly believe that statement that was made by Mr. Cobble?
Well, I'm glad you asked.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I, you can ask them privately.
That's inappropriate.
There's a statement made that they, lower deductibles just to save premiums to show a cost saving. That's an incorrect statement. They worked with KLC to come in and schedule a risk analysis outside of the normal timeframe to give us another 3% discount for a total of $33,477 is the number I have. If we had not hired roading, I do not believe we would be saving $33,000 a year right now. They came in with their experience insuring municipalities and they used that experience and they redid our scorecard. They made some tweaks here and there. And that $33,000 a year is there for the next two or three years till they do another audit. And I have full confidence they'll have this to the 80% by then, which will more than double that savings. It'll go from 6% off our premium to 12% off our premium. The experience they have, the training they have, the risk management, they come in and tell us where to save. Here's your scorecard. You all need to start doing this. We, OSHA wants to come in and look at our Parks Department. They are, have held or going to hold, they have held mock OSHA inspections. So, the city of Frankfurt is not exposed to that liability as well. You know, I still, I can't, the scorecard savings wasn't just about a safety committee. That's a questionnaire that has 40 or 50 items. And their experience was instrumental in saving that money. I need guidance from this commission. I'm a conservative guy. I don't like raising taxes. You know, I don't like spending a lot of money. That's just the way I am. If we don't have it, don't spend it. But when I hear a lot of commissioners that will opine to the fact of taking the 4% property tax, but they won't do it anymore because we need to do better and cut. And then I find a way to cut. And it's going to be reversed. You know, let's be clear. We will still get this savings if they walk away today. You know, that's a savings they found for us through our carrier. I had a commissioner that I believe has stepped out that made a statement in a September voting meeting. "We have to look at outside and external partnerships to afford better for our town. We can do it, but we have to be willing to have tough conversations as a commission and not sort of fall through with. That's the way we have always done things."
And...
I'll say it again.
Mayor, may I just, may I just say, Mr. City Manager, we are having that difficult discussion right now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mayor, I like your idea if roading wants to respond and then...
Mayor.
Well, I think the city manager was still what...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Tibbeton had...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I thought you...
I thought you wanted Eric Wisman. Commissioner Wisman, here he is. You could start with the paragraph again.
Yeah, I made a statement that I need clear direction from this commission what you want out of me. Do you want me to tighten the belt or do you all want to just raise taxes and not tighten the belt? Commissioner Wisman made a statement in September voting meeting. "We have to look at outside and external partnerships to afford better for our town. We can do it, but we have to be willing to have tough conversations as a commission and not sort of fall through with. That's the way we've always done things." That honestly is good advice. That is something that, you know, we fall in, if we see we can do better, if we can cut costs. You did not want to raise property taxes. You made it clear in that meeting. You didn't want to take the 4%.
I think rather than, am I pointed at a specific...
No, I'm just making a point of the direction I'm getting from this commission.
You're talking about the commission, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
You don't want to raise taxes, but... You don't want to raise taxes, but, uh, there's a lot of money being, wanting to be spent. The only alternative to not raising taxes and spending money is cutting costs. We've got a lot of tough decisions out there, and it's gonna get tougher. We'll see some long-term planning in a minute. You know, there's, there's a list of other things. You know, there was a premium lowered by about $17,000 at my direction. They sat down with me and said, "Here's your premiums. Here's the claims you've had," and I looked at it. So, does that mean we've been paying, uh, you know, we have this higher deductible, but we haven't been having claims? I said, "Well, let's lower it. I think we can handle the risk." We're a city that self-insures medical and workers' comp. That is very rare in the state of Kentucky. We accept the risk, and we've saved a lot of money doing it. If I see a premium, we're talking $17,000. All, you know, you go from a five, a $2,500 premium to $5,000 because you haven't seen the claims. I'm, I'm all about numbers, you know. I'm not gonna keep a lower deductible if we're not seeing claims in that area. That was purely my decision. It wasn't their decision. You know, there, there are so many things. This is in the record. I've emailed this to you. I've emailed you the November update, the January update for a ninety-day review. I don't have any bad things to say about Chennault Hoag. Uh, I just have, I have a lot of good things to say about Rotting Insurance. And if I'm not supposed to look for savings, please advise or give me guidelines on what, what's, what's available to go after and what's not. That's all I've got.
Mayor, again, I like your idea of having Rotting respond, and then Chennault Hoag, and then we'll move from there.
Sure.
I had a comment.
Oh, Commissioner Walters has a comment.
Sorry, before they come, oh, thank you. Um, I just want to comment. And I, I applaud both of you guys wanting the city and wanting this. I applaud both of you giving back to our community. Um, the goal here is insurance, right? Not who outgave the other and whatever. That's not what I do. As you know, how I've been the leader so far in the city commission, I don't pull for one side or another connections or anything like that. I do what's right. And right now, I just sit in the middle of what is right and what is wrong. And so, my goal is that it was moved for us to give them ninety days to do what? Did they do it? If not, where do we go from there? And the integrity of our city commission. My own personal insurances and things of that nature is something that I, you know, I look at every few years, as we all should in our lifetime. So, uh, it's not that I don't want to go one way or the other. I just want to do what's fair. And at the same time, if we give the integrity of the commission, if we give them ninety days to prove or whatever it is we expected from them, and they did that, we definitely need to take that consideration. Our integrity is at the line, and it's not about who outgave everybody. Everybody on both sides of this is from Frankfurt, dealing with Frankfurt. They have a business here in Frankfurt. They have people that live here in Frankfurt. It's going back and forth, right? And so, it doesn't need to be a knockout battle of who's giving more money or who's doing what. It's about the integrity. We got here. How did we get here? That would be on our city manager, why he felt that. We've hired him to do a job. We've hired him to bring this to us if that's so wish, and whatever that is. Now, moving forward, I do think that we, if the city commission says, "Hey, we need to be aware of this in enough time before things have moved," then we can bring that to the city commission and, and the city manager on how, how that's handled. Or do we say every three years, "We need to revisit this"? But right now, our integrity is at stake. And if there's something that's happened in this ninety days that I haven't read so far that's been really, really negative, uh, over their ninety days, I, I really need that to be shared. I guess maybe when you guys both come forward, then maybe I can hear that. But just know, we asked for something in ninety days, and if they've delivered, it's, that's pretty clear to me they've delivered. I hate to be in this situation, definitely. But again, I'm not tied. I don't want to be tied to either side because I like both groups. I love Frankfurt. I'm glad they do what they do. But this is about insurance. This is about saving money. It's about the city manager doing what's best for our community and what's best for our budget. If it's something that we need to take in consideration two, three years from now, we need to write that down. But I don't want to go back and forth on who gave what, who sponsored what, or who's been here. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry. Ms. Porter, do you want to come back and respond to anything that any, uh, anybody has said?
To be honest, there's really not a lot to say, but I wasn't gonna pass on the opportunity, uh, because I, I agree with everything she just said. I, I would have said as well, too. This is, it, this is about performance. This is about, uh, working on behalf of the city, being chosen in a, in a, what, what we definitely consider, uh, to be a normal RFQ process that we responded to. There were three agencies that responded, us and Arthur J. Gallagher and Chennault Hoag. We were graded by the committee. We received the highest score. Our score was 242 points. I think Gallagher was 219, and Chennault Hoag was 186. We won fairly. Uh, we, we have represented the, the city fairly. We have done some good work for the city, and we want to continue to have that opportunity to finish out what we started. I've never had a contract for three months. That wasn't, that wasn't what we began and started this process to, to think that we did. We didn't perform these services over the last three months because we thought we had to get everything in in three months. This is what we committed to when we met with the city at the very beginning, and when we were honored, uh, with, with the opportunity to work for you. So, these are just things we're getting started on, and, and we want to continue on with our work with the safety committees and the things that we're doing, reviewing contracts and working with each department of the city in, in various ways. We've done a good job. We deserve to be able to continue that. If you want to bid your insurance that next year or something like that, that's your, certainly your right to do. Any of this is your right to do, obviously. That's why we're here. But, uh, again, I, I don't want to go back and forth with who, who gave what and what. I, I, I could do that. We can go down that road because we have done a lot as well, too. It's maybe not as obvious, and it may not have been as, as recent even in some ways. But, but we, we do care about the city every bit as much as anybody else in this room, and we have worked hard. And we ask you to please honor us and respect us and, and help us to keep our integrity, uh, with what we've, with what we've committed to and what we want to follow through with. So, I, I thank you for your consideration, and I ask you to please allow us to finish what we started. Thank you.
Scott, would you?
You know, we tried to work with, we tried to work with the city manager. We tried to work with the city manager in this last year and ask for meetings to discuss the scorecard. This was the year that we were due to review for the scorecard, and he said, "Let me settle into my job," and he put us off. So, I see, we saw why. Clearly, he wanted to bid this out. Secondly, he said there's savings of $33,000 overall, but he was quoted in the paper as $17,000, and in other reports as $17,000, which is a very small portion of the total amount of coverage. And if he wanted better deductibles that he initiated towards them, where was the discussion with us? We want to work with you all. We have worked with you all for many years. We don't understand, if you don't have a problem with us, what held back supporting your community. I can see clearly you are supportive of them, and rather than your own business right here. And I, I would hope that it could be better. We want it to be better. If you, this has been our pri, I mean, you, you've been the feather in our cap for 55 years. So, I, I'm sad to see it turn out this way, to be honest.
I got something, sorry. Okay.
Don't they have anything to say?
The, uh, the statement was made that I, that you all reached out to me to review the KLC scorecard. That's an incorrect statement. Did not mention that I had to settle into my job. You stated that this was the year the KLC scorecard was up to date, and that's why you brought it to us. This was not the year the KLC scorecard was up to date.
Yes, it was.
It's done every three years.
And this was the third year coming.
This was the third year coming.
It was.
This is it?
Yeah.
We have documents from KLC with the schedule, and this was the year.
All right.
And it's the same discount, cut out the same scorecard. It's the same discount regardless of who the agent is. It's the same discount.
So, you send it in to, so again, just set your next one, get in.
I mean, it's, uh, Will Coblen, owner of Chennault Hoag here from Frankfurt, uh, but I, it's the same scorecard. You, you fill the scorecard out. It's the same discount whether it's them or us. It's the same discount on who filled the scorecard out. I don't know when the scorecard got to you, or when it came to the city, where it went, but it was held until the, till the bid went out.
I don't, I don't believe that's an accurate statement.
We have...
We have the record.
We have the calendar from KLC.
Mayor, I think we've heard enough testimony. If the commission pleases, I would like to make the following motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to, um, create some testimony myself if I could before you make a motion.
Well, all I was gonna say is, all of us are gonna have an opportunity to explain our vote and to discuss the matter one at a time.
Thank you. I agree, Commissioner Seale.
I'd like to bring up an alternative if I may, first, if you wouldn't mind. Uh, would you yield the floor, Commissioner?
No, no, I won't. Was, uh, about to make a motion.
I already recorded. Ask Commissioner Seale. You did.
And the motion is beginning February first, two thousand and twenty, expiring February first, two thousand and twenty-two. I would like to move the city's insurance to Chennault Hoag. That's the motion.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Seale.
Second. I second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Tippett. All right, now, discussion.
Discussion. May I go first?
Absolutely.
Sure.
To me, it comes down to knowledge, uh, to yes, the word local, and yes, the word money. Chennault Hoag has 54 years of extensive knowledge of our policy, from every truck and every building, and where those trucks are and where those buildings are, to our employees and departments, and where those departments are located. They have extensive knowledge of city claims issues over those 54 years. Citizens, constituent claims, and an in-depth knowledge of our policy history, which is so important. Local, yes, they're a local business since 1904. City commissioners would like to favor local businesses, but they, Chennault Hoag was unable to qualify for that preference. They have employees, our citizens, that live here. They support our community. And is minutes away when we need service and help with any of our claims. It's important to support our local business, who in turn support our local economies. I see Carmen back there of the Chamber of Commerce. How many times have we, as members of this commission and the community at large, has been, uh, encouraged to shop local? DFI would tell you the same thing, because it benefits not only the business, but the people that the business employs. Chennault Hoag represents some of the very largest municipal insurers in the United States. Money. Every year for 54 years, 43 years, I think, maybe for Mr. Coblen, Granville Coblen, he has gone and tweaked the policy every year. With whom? With the finance director and the city managers. And he's improved that policy. Who is to say that Chennault Hoag, in tweaking this policy that we're talking about tonight, can't come up with even more savings than their opposition, than the current holder? When we talk about savings, you know, three different figures were thrown at. First, it was $17,000, then it was $32,000, then it was 40, uh, $40,000 in savings. I think Chennault Hoag has the experience and ability to save at least that much money. And, um... And, and in fact, those numbers, even if you take the large one, we're talking about 5% of the total policy. That is not a big number to me. Want to point out one other change in the policy. It was, it was a, a letter that members of the commission received on January ninth from Mr. Coblen, Granville Coblen, talking about personal injury protection, PIP, for lost, uh, lost wages and medical bills after a car accident or injury. We have over 300 vehicles in the city of Frankfurt, probably a little too many in my opinion. Rotting claimed to be saving the city $1,300 by reducing coverage from $40,000 to $20,000. This is a significant reduction in coverage for our own city employees and their families who ride in those city vehicles, most notably police cars, of course, uh, our bus drivers, et cetera. The coverage was increased some years ago from $10,000 to $40,000 per person when the city permitted law enforcement officers to take their vehicles home and transport family members in off-duty hours. Worker compensation when working, but this coverage ends after hours. PIP covers your family members, passengers in ambulances, buses, and those individually transported by police. So, that $1,300 in annual savings amounts to $4.30 per vehicle. I think our employees are worth $400, $4.30 per vehicle. It was a bad decision by Rotting. I yield to the next commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, if I may, you know, um, I'm angered by this entire process, um, and since I was singled out, I'll, I'll speak to some of this. I, I think that, um, uh, I was quoted as the commission having to just tighten its belt and really do what's, what's best for us here. And I meant the commission, not, not the staff. This should have been a commission decision all along. It was taken from us. And frankly, um, city manager, you, you indicated this in your, in your very first interview with us, that you intended to change our insurance policy. We're not changing our provider. We're, we're still using KLC. We have, uh, we, we've not made any drastic alterations, and it was the year. Not only Chennault Hoag told me that it was the year for you all to review your scorecard. City manager did tell me that in his office, and he intended and talked to the League of Cities to halt that process so that we could pull in an outside firm to review, um, options. So, um, that, that is an accurate statement, or at least what he told me. You know, we, we have a local procurement preference. It's an ordinance that we established purposefully to support our local businesses first. And I'm angered, again, that, that our staff intentionally ignored that. I think we found one loophole, um, that was abused, and I intend that we're gonna fix that in the future. I directed staff ninety days ago to come up with something to strengthen our local preference ordinance. I thought this ninety-day process was a mistake because we were gonna get here anyway. I knew that was gonna be the fact. So, um, personally, preferably, I'd like to ask myself and another commissioner to join me and the other commissioners to each put a representative. I think the most fair thing for us to do would be to go back to the beginning and interview the two providers, the agents of record, and compare on our own, and make sure that the scoring is applicable and preferably applied with, given the, the, um, lack of local preference, um, inclusion. I think that's the only fair thing for us to do and to go back and, and decide independently who is the, the best provider for the city, reviewing all things fairly. I unfortunately don't have all the faith that I need to in, in some of our staff members that, that this was a, a fair process. So, I would prefer not to move forward on this action and ask another commissioner to join me and others to send representatives to fairly review the position of, of all of these, uh, the qualifications of both entities before we make a, a decision about which way is, is best to go. But I'm adamant that we have to always support local, um, businesses and local folks first unless there is just drastically difference savings. And in this case, we didn't change the provider. We didn't change the policy. We just changed the agent of record. I, I think this was... I, I think this was a process that we need to step back into and review more fully as a commission, and make our decision fully based in, in the facts and go forward from there. I, I don't like that we were excluded from this, this process. And I'm sorry.
We're in a, we've got a motion in a second, but... So, anything, any changes would have to be as an amendment or defeat a motion and then make another, make another motion. City Manager wanted to make some comments?
Never once said I was going to change insurance policy. There was some discussion in late summer about just renewing, and I held that up so we could do the proper RFQ process and interview new candidates for the brokerage. I never once told anybody to stop a scorecard. I never heard about a scorecard until it was brought up. It is not, and we're gonna have proof of that, that we were not in the third year for a KLC scorecard. The local preference policy does not apply when we don't pay somebody. It's made so a local bidder, who's within 5% of a non-local bidder, gets that 5% advantage. We've never cut a check to our insurance program. We cut a check to Kentucky League of Cities. Kentucky League of City pays our broker. It's completely under the administrative purview of the city manager to change brokers and do a whole lot of other things. I've made that decision, and it's completely under your all's authority to change that decision. But it's not appropriate to sit up here and make statements that are untrue.
I think it's your turn, Commissioner Tippett. Did you have something you needed to say?
Commissioner Tippett, did you want to be recognized?
No, I don't wanna be recognized, but I, I think I'll weigh in.
You may.
First of all, I, I do not mean to make personal comments. But I, I don't think it's appropriate for Commissioner Wissman to say, "I directed staff." See, that's part of the problem. We're trying to arrive at a three-vote majority here through consensus.
I don't think I said that.
I believe you did. I got it written down right here. Okay? I took notes as you were speaking. So, I can't support what you just said because of that. Okay? You've interjected this. You've rejected, in my humble opinion, Commissioner, you have interjected a personal note into this discussion. You know, and I'm, I'm just counting here the times that I have made notes, and I do not mean to, I do not mean to disparage you, but where you have taken both sides of the same issue, and you do it repeatedly. You know? So, what I think we need to do as a body is resolve this issue with a vote. It's hard. It's tough. Okay? And the electoral consequences be darned. Do what you think is right and pull the trigger. And then let the electorate decide if you need to be elected or not, again, re-elected. That's real integrity for Frankfurt. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm finished.
Sure.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Wow. I just sort of really resort back to what I said to begin with. This is about integrity, and if we come to a decision to stay with who we were at, it was pointless for commissioners to bring up the tactic to give them 90 days to prove themselves. We've given them 90 days, and I mean, I, I agree that you guys are, you know, for who you vote for, and that's completely fine. I'm not really voting for sides. I'm just voting for what was right in the process. So, not that I agree with Eric by all means of everything he said, but I do agree. If this is about having the right insurance company representing the city, scorecards will tell the truth. And if we have to do it across the board, that's only fair. But I'm not going back to this he said, she said, who's been here since 1908, or whatever. It's about insurance and what's best for our community and our integrity. We gave them 90 days to prove themselves, and they showed what we needed. I'm not saying that Chenault, that they wouldn't have been able to do the same. I'm not saying that. But integrity is that we gave 90 days. And what I would like to ask is, why did we give them 90 days if we were just gonna turn back around and say, "It doesn't matter how much you save us. You could have saved us 37 or $100,000. We're gonna go back to Chenault Hope, and we're gonna take the savings with us." I think we've put them, we've allowed them to put in work for 90 days. I think it is unfair that we give them 90 days to prove themselves, and now we just say, "Well, thank you for the discount. We're going back to where we go." I agree. Local, I support local, and I want local. But we have put ourselves in bad predicament of not following rules or regulations or not have ordinance or anything else in place for us to handle this. And if we wanted to be on the front end of this, then we should have got with the city manager before, and this should have came across, and that's for us to correct it now. But I'm not choosing sides because of who's better than what. We said it. My integrity is that we gave them 90 days to prove themselves. They proved themselves. If we agree that in two years, we would like to go back and look at Chenault Hope and them again, or what have you, then we can do that. I think that they are great for our community. I think that people from here are great for our community. But what we said was that, and if we continue to do that, it's gonna hurt our integrity as city commissioners, and that means we're gonna continue to be looked at on what we make. Yes. Is it political sometimes? It is political sometimes. But right now, I stand, trust me. I had people call and say, "You better vote this way, or you better vote this way. You won't get elected." Well, you know what? I gotta elect it for two years. That's what I'm here for. If I don't have two years ahead of me, I don't have two years ahead of me. But right now, I've got 11 more months to work, and I expect to do right by Frankfurt. And I'm hoping that they will see that. I support local. I support this. But my integrity is that we gave them 90 days, and they proved what we asked for, and it's wrong to go back on our integrity just to give it back to a local agency. And we need to ask the city manager to make sure. Either we go back and we look at the scorecards fair, like Eric Wissman sort of said, or we say from here on out, every two or three years, we go back to the drawing board and we look at Chenault Hope or another insurance company. That's what I think we should do. But I'm not voting for either. I'm voting for what's right and what we ask for.
Mayor Protown?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned money and how much they save.
Yes.
I tried to address that in my conversation or my point.
Yes.
And that was up to maybe 5%.
Yes.
And you've also heard testimony that Chenault Hope has, has reduced our policy from $1 million to $700,000. I think that is significant.
I do. I heard the same numbers, as I called a couple of people, Mr. Coblen himself.
I was thinking I might have left out
No, no, no. I got the numbers.
$1 million to $700,000.
I got the numbers. That wasn't something they did in 90 days.
I don't mean to press it.
Right. But again, my, back to integrity. That wasn't something that Chenault and Hope did in 90 days.
You're correct.
We had those numbers before we put up on this company to say, "You've got 90 days to prove yourselves." So, if we were going to do that, we should have said, "Chenault and Hope is saving us. It's got us from $1 million to $750,000. You've gotta beat that." Because now you're holding them up to, it's a tit for tat. Well, here's what they were saving us. Well, if they were saving us this much, why did the city manager and the city commission say, "We need to give them 90 days if they were saving us so much?" Because those are the same numbers.
To see how much they could save us.
Is that fair?
That was insufficient for me.
Is that fair that a company who has been here since 19...
'04.
'04 has saved us that much money, and a company has 90 days to prove the same thing, that a company since 1904 has been here?
I know they've taken us from $1 million to $700,000.
I understand that, and I applaud them.
And Commissioner, that's $300,000.
I applaud them. I think I've done a couple of event, uh, insurance through them. I respect them.
We're getting hung up on financials that are irrelevant.
I'm not gonna argue.
We did not change from KLC as a provider. Either company could go through the same processes and have the same results or better. It depends upon our staff working directly with them. If there were shortcomings in our policy, it was likely, more so, because we have replaced our entire staff in the last year and a half, who now need to learn how to do a safety concern. Again, the financials are relevant to me, and I, and I thought it was a mistake. And I believe this is what I said, that I directed, that I thought it was a mistake that we gave 90 days. And I still think it's a mistake that we've, we've put on this, this process that should have been the commission's directive or decision, so.
Mayor, I call for a question on the motion.
I think Mayor needs to speak. Mayor needs to speak.
I have some unanswered questions. I've heard people say that this is the third year of the scorecard, and other people say that it is not. And I've heard both, both sides say that they've got, both have proof of it, that...
I agree.
I agree.
So, that's an unanswered question for me that... I don't know how we can...
You're the parliamentarian, sir.
Well, I was gonna say, the, the problem is... I'm not sure who is correct, because I don't, I don't think anybody's intentionally misrepresenting that. If Ms. Coblen...
Well, your last scorecard was in 2017. This is the third year.
We did our new scorecard in 2019.
Because according to your information, they, they forced it to get the discount so then they could prove in their 90 days that they could get your price down. Just turn on your mic, too, if I may.
I'm sorry. Do you...
And just to help, sure, Jennifer Jenkins, Jenkins, Draker Finance. Just a couple of things to remind as far as the timeline perspective. Before we even started the RFQ, Mrs. Ross, Keith Parker, and myself met, oh, and Kathy. We actually met with KLC because Kathy Fields of HR. And we realized that the rates are determined by KLC. And so, before we started with the RFQ process, we went to KLC and we had a meeting with them and asked them ultimately, what are the key areas that we should look for? What are the areas that we can, you know, try to have savings, et cetera? The safety scorecard was one of the items, and the specific item that KLC... So, this is separate and objective from the two parties that are in question. KLC specifically showed us that there is one line item that if an agent would have met with us, we would have gotten the five points to bring us over to the new level. It was not related to the safety scorecard at all. It was related to an insurance agent reviewing claims routinely with our department heads. That had been scored at zero on the last risk card. So, that was the first item from KLC that we were relying on. The second item was then that safety scorecard. Completely acknowledged that it probably was effective in years past. However, in the last safety risk scorecard, we were not able to get a point. So, the way that they assess the, the rates is based on, you know, the level of claims or the lack of claims that we have. The other item that KLC told us is, within the last five years, no claims report has been pulled on our claims record. So, that right there proved to us, within the last five years, none of the claims experience has been reviewed with our department heads. So, just in, you know, defense of the process itself, staff did work specifically with KLC in order to find objective ways to determine what has been effective, what hasn't been effective, and what's out there. The second point that I would like to make is also, it's not about the dollar value, or only about the dollar value. Our current lot, insurance in the, sorry. The current insurance that we're getting now and the current protection has been increased for the same dollar value. So, there are opportunities where in certain areas, we may have decreased, like our PIP. We were carrying more PIP than Lexington and Louisville. For the city of Frankfurt, I think that this is completely different from apples and oranges, and so that was a clear savings there. The other area is where we have increased. So, Rotian was able to work and acknowledge that increasing the sewer coverage up to, I think it was $500,000 that we took it up to for each case, and our premium did not go up. So, I think it's a qualitative measures also that I would like for the board to consider, is that dollar-wise, yeah, we may not have gotten a huge $300,000 increase, but we're getting more coverage for the same amount. The other items that I would like to bring up is the training opportunities. You know, Chenault and Hope did a great job of training. They brought in, they brought inside KLC, they brought to us KLC, they brought to us other parties. However, Rotian has internal training facilities. They have internal training opportunities, and they have web, webinars. So, they have given us access to various online resources that Coblen wouldn't be able to give us in the past. And so, that has helped tremendously decrease the time for onboarding. It's increasing our risk and safety from, you know, a personnel safety matter and an ocean matter. So, it's, other than the dollar value, it's a qualitative aspect, too, that we're getting now. We're getting more bang than our buck. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that.
Can I make a comment first?
Since I've got a motion, is it... I just wanna be, and if anybody else wants to, I'm gonna do the same, just to keep making sure we're fair.
Just to address the, the point that she made about nobody pulled claims for reports. We don't have to pull claims for reports. As an agent of KLC, the reports are available to us at all times on the website. We have, we address claims annually with department heads. Many times in the room, across the hall, or they came to our office. So, please don't think that we didn't do our due diligence to review claims every year and didn't review your claims every year. We certainly did.
You might do it here, so we can just make sure that we hear you properly.
The scorecard, just to reflect the scorecard. The scorecard was due to be reassessed in 2020. So, it was due to be reassessed for, for October 1, 2020, to 21 policy term. And what we did was go meet with KLC. We talked to them about some of the things and the meetings that we've already, that we had already had with the city, some of the things they were doing. We knew we could get those points to go on and get it, and they, and, and asked them to agree that if we could show them that they, that the city was already doing some things to earn those points, and that we, by reviewing the losses and doing things that we could do with them, that they had confidence in, that they agreed to come and review it a year early. They did do that, and they backed up the credit to October 1, 2019 instead of 2020. And yes, we absolutely do have that, I could get, I mean, that verification with KLC very easily.
Can you explain the PIP further?
Coverage.
Do we have any employees that are at more risk with a comp?
Yeah. Well, for employees, obviously, first line of coverage, whenever employee is injured in any way, whether it's an accident in a vehicle or not, is workers' comp. So, you have the full workers' comp coverage for your employees. So, PIP is not necessarily a player for, I mean, it could be above and beyond, but, but PIP, but work comp pays everything. Work comp pays 100% of the, of the medical and the injuries. So, that, that PIP is, and as Jennifer said as well, too, we did a study of, of the other cities and, and in Kentucky, and Frankfurt had much higher limits than anyone else. Thank you.
Mayor, could I say something?
We're gonna be, we're gonna, let's do this and be slow and make sure everybody gets to be heard. This is too important to not allow that.
It's a democratic process, Mayor.
So, again, my name is Granville Coblen, and PIP coverage is loss wages, earnings, and medical expenses. The city commission chose to increase it from the $10,000 to the $40,000 when the city commission allowed individuals to take vehicles home, like mayors, and emergency people, and policemen, and fire chiefs, or whomever. And so, when, then they allowed them, I mean, initially, a person drove to work, picked up a city car, drove the city car, turned it in, and drove his own car home. But that changed, and when it changed, then they allowed family members to ride in those vehicles and to be, to be taken to and from schools or wherever. So, that's when the city commission decided that for those people in those cars, that $40,000 was more appropriate than $10,000, or $20,000, or $30,000. They chose a figure of $40,000 to cover the people in those cars that are not covered under workers' comp. City policemen and mayors are not covered... City policemen and mayors are not covered under working's comp when they're off duty. And the people on the transit system are not covered, the people riding buses are not covered for working's comp because they are not employees. Ambulance, the person in an ambulance, we had an ambulance get hit and turned over. A person in an ambulance who got injured had coverage under PIP. A police officer delivered a child, pulled out a Hardee's, had a bad accident, and we, the coverage was all under the PIP coverage. So that's why the city, and we never tried to compare ourselves to other cities. We always tried to compare ourselves to us and what our employees and people that we serviced, you know, people riding buses and family members. That's what we chose to do, that's what the city chose to do at that time. Now, obviously, if the city were to choose differently, which they have, then that's their decision, but they're lowering the coverage for their own and for those people who are riding the buses in an off-duty position.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to say anything? You're shaking your head, so do you want to?
We could go on.
And that's what's hard for me, because I don't have a way to go back and take this information that we have heard tonight unless we stop and we go look at facts, which I always would prefer to do.
Agreed.
Pardon?
Agreed.
I mean, I would, I would prefer we either take a recess and go get this information if we can, or we.
Where are we, parliamentary, in the parliamentary?
Well, there's a motion in a second.
Yeah. I think we, I think we need to vote, and, or else we rehash the whole thing over again.
I don't, I don't know if it's re, we vote.
You don't think we'll have the same discussion like this the next time? Sure, we will.
I mean, I think that we just put parameters on that. What are we doing? Are we charging ourselves and the city manager to take the information we've gathered, which has been a complete overhaul of information on both sides? Both are fair companies, both have legit reasons. I mean, like you said, we can go back and forth. It's like tit for tat, tat for tit, and it's back and forth. So this company is gonna say what needs to be said because they're professionals, they're great at what they do. This company is gonna say what needs to be said. They're great. So if we take that, we have an opportunity to take it back, like he said, and either hash it out another day, come back. Or you either make the vote, and you make the vote on none of the information you received tonight, you make the vote on whatever you gathered before. What I can say is the integrity for both companies, for me, reaching out to people that are with this company and with this company have both been very, they've been a delight. They've given us information. It's never been threatening, it's never, it's just they want to represent Frankfurt, and I appreciate that from both sides. Now, community members, not so friendly, but people in this room that have spoken tonight have been very diligently in answering questions and being nice and knowing they want what's best for Frankfurt, and they do want to represent Frankfurt. So I think if we do anything, as the mayor said, I don't even know if a recess tonight will do because it's been an overhaul, but maybe we can take what we have and see that on a card. I'm not sure, but.
Well, I'll check. Let's see, attorney, we could, we could always just, we're not gonna take any more testimony, but we'll do, sort of like the courts, we'll take this information and go back and look at it and really analyze it and see what the, what the real, and again, people could just be misunderstanding whatever has been said or hasn't said, so I'm not gonna single out any particular thing. But for me, I've heard both sides say, and our staff, all saying different, different things. And I don't, I'm not saying anybody's not telling the truth, because I don't wanna say that. It's just usually misunderstandings on different things. I just wanna find out what are the real facts here to make sure that we do the right thing.
And is there someone in the middle, Mayor, that could help with this decision and understanding the facts from both sides that don't have a dog in either fight that will make this legit and fair on, based on insurance, working with staff and doing things of that nature versus?
That's what I was suggesting, a separate committee of some sorts, including commissioners or not, we could have independently that creates a new scorecard and reevaluates. It's completely unfair to put these two companies at odds in this format, and I really despise that in the position we're in. But we should have been at this at the forefront.
I don't think, I don't think a committee with a commissioner on it or anything of that nature is what I'm asking. I'm asking for a person that doesn't have a dogfight in either one, hasn't really heard all of the information here and how much money one family has donated to another. I want someone that doesn't have a dog in this fight that can be equal on both sides, just to say, Frankfurt, here is your best decision, and here's why. Here's a dollar amount, here's not. Here's what they offer, here's what they don't. Here's who I'd go with. And that is not a committee with a city commissioner or with a mayor or anybody else on it. It's the city manager and the, and our lawyer to say, hey, this is a person, there can be no dogs in that fight.
Call the question, Mayor. I don't know if maybe the cities could.
They may have an issue due to the fact that KLC.
I get it.
I'm sorry.
So where are we procedurally, Mayor?
Well, the only way we would be able to do that would be to take that other motion off the table, or if commissioners that made the motion the second want to go on with that motion, we'd either get voted down, or voted up, and members could vote against that, that motion, not because they're against one company or another, but just to allow the process to get clarified.
So then how will we procedurally, if we do that, how do we procedurally move from that point?
We would say, we would make a recommendation that, I would say, our city attorney could, could reach out to find who, to try to get this information, answer these questions about, you know, like, is it the third year of the scorecard or not? Is it, does KLC determine the rates, or who does, and all the stuff about the PIP? This is stuff that I just heard tonight.
Right.
So I don't know who's correct and who's incorrect. And I don't think anybody's trying to mislead us. Don't get me wrong. I want to say that over and over again. It's just, I need to know what the real truth in all of this is. And again, nothing, anybody's distorting the truth.
I'm not willing to withdraw the motion. You know, if you vote the motion down, that doesn't mean that you still can't go ahead and investigate more.
Correct.
And I would certainly encourage, if you do appoint a committee, two of those members be the last two finance directors that we have to serve on that committee. But anyway, my case is, I will not withdraw the motion.
And that's perfectly fine, Tricia. It didn't even have to be a committee. I just want to get this information so that I will know what's correct, because I've heard three different people say different things.
Can we have the motion restated? I've forgotten what the motion is.
The motion was to.
Beginning February 1, 2020, expiring February 1, 2022, the city's insurance, insurance would change to Chenault. Why did I make it two years, you know?
It should be agent, I think, agent of records, which you.
Please.
Agent of record.
Agent of record. I'm sorry.
Sorry, yes, agent of record.
Mayor, I have a question. Point board, please, sir.
Absolutely, Commissioner Tiber, wish report.
So again, help me here, Mr. Parliamentarian. If we take the vote and it is defeated, okay, what does that mean procedurally if the true aim of this body is to find out, get clarity on information?
That one motion would die, and then there would be another motion, I would suspect, or we could just give a directive to find out, let's take these, this, all of these unanswered questions, or these questions that have been answered two different ways, and find out what's the real answer. What's the correct answer?
So if the motion is not voted down, then we change agents?
That's correct, on February 1.
Call the question, Mayor.
All right. I think I've had two people call since, Commissioner Sauer and Commissioner Tiber both called for the question.
The first and the second for the motion.
It's okay, but they can't. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
We're voting on Sowers, right?
Correct.
Yes, correct.
No.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissman?
No.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
I'm gonna vote no, and it's not because I'm against that particular motion. I just want to get back on the table to try to find these answers.
Okay, so we're, so clarify for us, Mayor, where we are procedurally.
Right now, we're still in limbo.
Currently, our, Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Correct, so the, the motion to change agents of records failed, which means Roding is still our current agent of record. If you all would like for us to now proceed in a different manner, if you would like to take a different vote, you can certainly do so. If you would like to form a committee, it's, it's up to you all. We just need a clear motion vote.
And I personally don't necessarily need a committee. I just want to get these questions.
I would like.
I would like to submit some questions to staff, and based on what we heard tonight. I don't necessarily, I don't want to take extra testimony outside the meeting from, from anybody else or from commissioners.
Correct.
Like, we just cut that off so that we're fair to both sides, that we don't enter anything new, just if we're doing a trial, which we're not, we're not, we're not.
At least we have a.
Because if it was a trial, I would let you cross-examine.
So we are turning, we are asking for you.
I would say that.
Finance and Laura, Ms. Ross.
I'm listening.
To go back, look at these cards, answer the questions we have, which are, oh.
Only what was discussed tonight.
Yes.
There is, I am very doubtful of my ability to pull out what questions we need answered from tonight. So what I would ask then is that maybe you all send me your questions? And that would be, I would have them right there in writing, and I will answer the questions to the best of my ability that I receive in writing or face-to-face that I write down as we speak from, from you all. That's gonna protect everybody and everything and get us good answers.
And then we make those questions that we submit available.
Yes, absolutely, who wants to see.
In the world that wants to see them.
Would you like those by the end of the week? When would you like those by, of a deadline, so we can meet that deadline?
I'd love them by the end of the week to get fair, to give time if we're going to discuss this again. That's the next question. When do we want to bring this back up again?
And when we bring it back up, we're not gonna take any more testimony because we've heard, we've heard everything. It's just, we just want to see, go back and say, what we heard tonight, what's correct and what's not, what's incorrect. And that's not to call anybody out or embarrass anybody, because if something comes out that somebody said something is incorrect, I'm just going to say, my take on that is, it was a misunderstanding on someone's part just because of confusion, or they didn't have enough information. That's all I want to get to, I want to see what is the, boil it down, and what's there. Now, again, commissioners, you may disagree with that.
No, I said, I think I said that first.
We can adjourned it later.
That's the only option.
Another episode.
Can I say something real quick?
That's it.
I'd like to say, I'll just recuse myself from any of that. I'd like Laura to handle the question-answer session. It seems, some people perceive I am biased before I even looked at the RFQ, so Laura, if you can handle that, or.
If that's the will of the body, I will do so.
I think that's a good idea.
Agreed.
Big of you.
What about, I'm sorry, Mayor May, I'm full.
You do it. I want, and I'm gonna ask our agents a question, too.
What about Commissioner Sowers suggesting that we have former finance directors be involved in that process?
It's whatever the majority wants to do. I'm gonna leave that up to the commission. I don't know that we need to.
They and the city managers, you know, would know the most about the policy.
I'm just asking.
I think it should, I think, Mayor, that it, I agree, I understand where you're coming from. I think it should be someone that is not biased, that hasn't been with the city, that doesn't have ties. We want what's best. It's not about them, or then we just want what, whatever they offer, or whatever they offer. Whoever offers the best is the winner.
Okay. Do we have a direction yet?
No. I'm sorry.
We can all set our personal opinion and relationships aside and be, and try to be as fair as possible. I try in every decision I make.
Oh, let me know, okay.
Mayor, I would like to say, we're going to make a decision at our very next meeting, the February, is it 14? No, that's.
No, it's the week, the 10.
I mean, we don't need to drag this out. We need to, to get it done, but I do, I want to be fair as possible. I have stated that I have a preference for local businesses, but I want to make sure we're fair.
You can have some.
May I ask another question, Mayor?
Absolutely.
For clarity's sake, as I proceed. The local preference is a huge issue here. So if we are, and I think I said this months ago, and I, please, please understand that I'm not saying I said something, but I think that we said if we want to change it, we absolutely can. We just need a directive or a vote from the Board of Commissioners to move forward changing it, and we'll be happy to. We just, we need that.
I believe that's where I said I directed something a while ago that I was claimed to have said, and there was no objection at the time at the meeting.
I'm glad you said it, because I do, I remember that, and that was, I was gonna say, I'm glad you reminded me because I forgot to say it.
Okay, so if you all would like for us to then look at options for, we just need to know what you would like us to do with the local preference, because as it is written right now, to keep us out of legal trouble going forward, you know, we're trying to apply it as written, but we certainly will entertain anything that you all want to, to change it in a way that it can be applied differently.
How about any business located within the city limits that provides goods or services, period?
Receives what kind of preference? So it's.
Do you have? The preference is 5%.
No, I don't. I would prefer that we not get into this tonight if at all possible, but, no, no, Commissioner, you're right, you're asking the right questions, but what I would say is, do you want us to look into changing the local preference and bring something back to you that broadens it beyond monetary value?
What's the monetary value today?
5%.
5%?
Is, and so 5% of a bid price. It's very difficult for us to take an ordinance that has that specific language and try to change it and apply it in a different situation. That is something, though, that is up to you all to change, and we will do so at your direction. We just need the direction.
Is there a dollar amount right now?
No, no dollar amount.
$500?
No, I'm sorry, Commissioner. It's, it'll need to be broadened outside, I wasn't clear, outside of the monetary bid price. Let's just make sure it's very clear in the language what it is we're to do. If you all want it broadened, and I welcome suggestions for that, and I can bring you guys back a draft. I can look at what some other cities have done. I'm happy to do any of that. I just need, I just need a directive from the body.
And if I may, I, that is what I said several months ago, and I believe there was no objections that I wanted to strengthen and ask for you all to bring us some language that I think we should strengthen. If we don't support our local businesses, no one else is necessarily going to, and we have to invest locally, even if it costs a little bit more. We all know this. We, we've gotta sustain our local businesses, our small businesses, and we've had multiple close-up in the last few months. Anytime we can support our town first, we must.
May.
Commissioner.
Just clarity. Who represents us, still them, still, who represents us and how, for how long? Are they just representing us to the next meeting, or are we revoting on this? We voted them in twice, so I'm just trying to make sure who's representing us, and are we revoting on that?
It would not require any vote to change. We'd just stay with the current company, which is Roding.
Right, but I'm just saying, when you bring back the information, are we voting again for that, or?
We would make a determination.
That's what I'm asking.
Right, the information comes back, we would determine if we were going to stay with the current provider, agent of record, or return it to Chenault.
Clear as mine. Okay. There is property for sale downtown if you need to build up, help our economic development.
And just so we want to be clear, I'd always give this advice to new commissioners, and Commissioner Wissman will say, I've said this to her numerous times, if we don't, if we're not sure, then everybody slow down and just stop. And don't, don't do something that you're gonna regret later, because we can, we could come back and find information that we voted on tonight, maybe, again, not correct, and we have to walk, I don't want to have to walk something.
But we should make every effort to resolve this thing.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So just to be clear, if anybody from Roding or Shenaltanaw wants to ask a question about what we're doing on this process, please ask.
What's the next item of business, Mayor?
Well, we need to clarify for our staff, just make sure, everything that, what do you need that's?
Thank you, yes.
That's not tied up.
To be clear, what I'm understanding from you all tonight is that I'm going to take questions from you all in writing that you would like answered, based on tonight's discussion. I will get the very best objective answers that I can, and I will bring them to you all at the February work session for your consideration.
Okay, and don't add any, any, ask the questions only of the information that was presented, so there's no new testimony and there's no extra discussion that either party would not have access to. And that's as fair as I can think. Now, help me out.
No, that's, that's, that's the best I've got to you, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you both for coming and for both of your information and all that you've done to allow us to get to this point and hope that we can move forward in February.
All right, personally apologize for the position that this commission has put both of you in. I think it's reprehensible, really, but.
Okay. Next, are we doing the? Okay, so discussion of long-term planning is next, and I want to understand, it's about a 15-minute presentation from staff, if we could.
Mayor.
Commissioner or Wissman?
May I suggest that we move up the item that I asked to?
Number nine, progress?
Move it up and go ahead and get that out of the way, so it's the only thing we have left. I, I got my questions answered, so I don't have any.
Is there an objection from staff? We'll pass over number eight and come back to it after we discuss number nine, any objections.
Mayor, would you entertain a motion to recess for five minutes?
Yes, I would.
It's.
I'll always entertain a motion.
It's 10 after nine.
I'll always entertain a motion. What was your motion?
Is there a second?
Or? What was it?
Resess.
Five minutes, second.
Five minutes, five minutes.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Sauer, so I'd like Commissioner Tippett any discussion? Seeing if all of us in favor, seeing if I was saying aye, any of you?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Call meeting back to where all members are present, and next item is the, which was item under, it's now number nine, it was number 11, I believe, if I remember three hours ago.
Mayor, if I may.
Commissioner.
I had asked Chief Briscoe to speak, too, that we, we only received one bid, because we have specialized equipment, and I just wanted to ask if there was much differentiation between typical bids, just because there already was one.
So when you start looking at specifics and drawing specifics into fire gear or vehicle purchases, you get real specific, so you don't get quite as many bids. But this is taking into new changes, the safety precautions. So we've sent it out to a couple people. I believe we put it on DemandStar, and these are the only ones that big back, and it's probably about a hundred-dollar increase from where we're at currently. So, thank you.
With that, I'll.
Hold on, what are, what are we under?
That's the one that was moved.
Moved. That's the one with, with my move.
Are we done with that one?
Did you get your answer?
I'm moved to approve, then.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Wissman, second by Commissioner Tippett, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Sauer, actually.
Ms. Jenkins, you know, this is always a real concern of mine as well. Do you feel like DemandStar isn't doing the job you hoped it would, or just difficulty in getting more than one bid?
I don't believe that DemandStar is not doing the job that we intended. We can see the number of plan holders, or the broadcast list, and so it's reaching a far greater population than we would ever be able to send it to if we just posted it on our website and from local, you know, networking. So I do believe it's really good. I, you halfway wonder, because of the specialized nature of it, and, you know, smaller compared to other fire forces, you know, I'm just kind of, you know, speculating if that could be the case. But I think because we are able to see that it went out to a broader area, it's effectively doing the job, the best job that it can.
You know, this commission, over the years, has always looked to Big Brother, which is Louisville and Lexington. You know, maybe that's something we should consider, consider in addition to see, you know, who they are using, or Covington, Cincinnati, whatever.
Sure.
Since they're so close.
Right, right. And Chief, would they have the same equipment specs that we're looking for, and that would allow us to compare apples to apples, to piggyback on anything?
I'm not familiar with the specs they're using, because they do a different purchase. They give X amount of dollars to their people, and they go through any vendor they want, which is different than what we do. We specify safety precautions through heat release, wear and tear, comfortable, uh, the comfortable wear, and then we specify what we set as the minimum standard. So they're, they're two different processes.
The process is different, but it doesn't mean the vendor that they choose is not a good vendor that might be able to give us a good price as well. So I, I just suggest that we look close by some of our large cities, whether it's police or fire, or anyplace else, to make sure we've got the best coverage and the best price for the best equipment that we can find. There's nobody on this commission that would say, you know, we want inferior equipment, safety equipment, for the fire department or the police department, nobody. So as long as we understand that, that would be my request in the future.
You bring up a, a thought for me, actually. How often do we talk to the county and, and talk about buying power as a joint entity? Do we have overlap of products, same needs?
Overlapping products, same garments, different types, different levels. Not, I don't know exactly what all they're going with. I just know that when we tried to work with uniform selection, there really wasn't an interest to work with us, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Was there a vote on the floor?
There was a motion and a second.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Call a question, Mayor.
Court, please call.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wissman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Wonder.
Yes, thank you.
Is that easy that was going?
Is there any new business? Oh, hold on a second, stop, stop, stop. My fault. I was looking at number, we, going back to number eight, the discussion of long-term planning.
Mayor, can we pull number eight from the agenda to be rescheduled?
Yes, if, is anyone else?
My second. And third.
If, yeah, if no one objects, then.
And can we ask the city manager to reschedule that for us and get with the?
We have to poll you all, I think we need to do a special call ahead of the February 10th work session, so we can get your requests for budget amendment done in February.
Yeah, there's a dead lug on it, that's why we're trying to do it. We were just looking at trying to do it the quickest we could.
Well, I'll not be going to Florida before then, so.
We'll poll.
I'm open.
I will work on a poll to see when you all will be available, this week or early next.
Surely we can decide that before we leave.
We can try.
So, okay, okay.
I'll call special media when I've got all of you all to be here.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's great.
Because we don't want anybody to miss it. And if we get to a point where we just don't have possible dates, then, you know, we'll just have to see if we can get the most people at a particular date, if that's okay. Commissioner Sauer.
City manager?
Yes, sir.
You and I have talked, and I've talked with Ms. Jenkins regarding the reinvestment grant. You know, it was my desire, as I mentioned at the work session two weeks ago, to maybe pull back $50,000 more for the downtown reinvestment, and $22,000 more in the neighborhood investment. Ever since it was started four or five years ago, it's always been $100,000 for the downtown reinvestment grant. We, because of budgetary concerns, pulled it back. I'd just like that to be one of the items on your list, that's all.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mayor, we should take this time to welcome the honorable squires.
Yeah, I was gonna say, they came over to borrow some money.
I'd like to have about 18 million. We're all doling it out. Do I need to come forward and?
Please.
Sure, if you want to.
Just say how much, what you need, anything.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna do it by districts.
After the meeting, tell us what you did on the Humane Society and the.
No. All right.
We've, we've had our own issues, Squire.
Tuesday and Wednesday is out for me for next week.
Mayor, we on new business?
Yeah, we can also, I think, a real quick question, because Commissioner Waldridge was asking, talking about the meeting, thanks, I was listening, we were talking about that. But we're in our new business.
Yes, we are.
All right, Mayor, I've got a, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
No, 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 I defer to you.
I did not get the floor, the mayor.
Don't fight over it, just go ahead.
Go, go, Commissioner, go.
I was just gonna bring up that, in speaking with Mr. Chief, the Chief Briscoe, in regards to a fire engine, if we could put this under new business, so we can move the ambulance. Could you speak on this, so we could try to put this under new business to move forward as quickly as possible, as I know that this is something you need very?
Yes, it's not a fire engine, it's an engine for an ambulance.
It's an engine, yes.
We've had a catastrophic failure in one of our engines, and it's gotta be replaced. So I gotta do an emergency approval and a budget amendment in order to get it in line.
Is there an objection to this as a budget amendment for February?
Yeah.
No?
I'm sorry, I was trying to, did I have an objection for?
Do we need it, we need it?
We gotta get it off as a budget amendment.
We can put it on our next special call.
Well, actually, it should already be budgeted, shouldn't it?
No, it's not budgeted, because.
It's for?
It's for replacement of a engine.
Yes.
We need a budget amendment.
We need a budget amendment, but this is, my understanding from Chief Briscoe is this is a really urgent situation, so if he can proceed.
Yes.
Knowing that the budget amendment is coming, it's about as contemporaneous as we can be.
Okay.
And we'll get it, right there with it as soon as we can.
Do we know the ballpark?
I believe it's gonna be right back to $32,000.
$31,335.06.
All right, so let's just go ahead and just, as a record, we are authorizing the moving forward on purchasing an engine or a motor. Does anyone object to that? If not, then we're gonna say all numbers are in agreement. Is that okay?
Yes.
Could you just borrow your glasses?
And I'm trying to put words in your mouth.
Did you understand my wording?
Yes, no, agreed.
Yes, all right. So, any other new business, Commissioner?
Tippett, did you have something?
Yes, uh, yeah, yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna ask a quick question, this is the point. Are you all trading candy over here for votes?
Yeah, I'm not running.
Just like seeing some people like changing them, trading them in those areas. Nobody's offered me, just kids.
If my wife knew I was eating candy, I'd be in big trouble.
Oh, I'm sorry?
She's never gonna know.
Mayor, I'd like to introduce Mr. Charles Bogart to the dais, to the podium, please.
Sure.
He has a presentation to make. Mr. Bogart is a renowned noted historian, and we are lucky to have him in our midst. Welcome, sir, please make your presentation.
Okay, I'll vote for him again.
Nah, I'm not running.
Charles Bogart, I'm here for the Friends of Fort Hill. Sean Pickens and John Downs asked me to do some research on Fort Hill, on the bicycles and other things up there, since it continues to be a play within the newspaper and that. Let me pass this out to you good people, which I should've had done before, but I didn't do before, because I'm not always organized, as my wife will tell you.
That's pretty organized.
What I did was, I'm gonna talk to a number of the parks, national parks and state parks. The bottom line is that if there's bloodshed shed on the battlefield, it's sort of restricted. No bicycles, no kite flying, no frisbee throwing, nothing like that. They have hiking trips. As you can see, Camp Nelson, it's no, Richmond, yes, but what they got is, is basically sidewalks alongside the road that the State Highway Commission put in, and they do allow people to walk on their hiking, their walking trails and the golf course there. Fort Dunfield was outside of West Point or Louisville, never any action there. They, it's a much bigger park, and they have bike trails on the backside of it. You go over to the national parks, which are run either by National Park Service or, let me flip back here, Camp Wildcat in Kentucky is actually run by the Forestry Service, and none of them allow bikes on the trails. Bicycles are allowed on roads in which automobiles are allowed to ride off. Now, there's been much said about Petersburg. Yes, they do have biking, rock trails there, but if you will notice that map that I put in the back, the Petersburg quote battlefield, or the Richmond battlefield, extends from 30-some miles. It's along the line of fortifications. Yes, you have bicycle riding back along the fortification, but when you get to Petersburg, and when you get to, I'm, five forks, you're at the actual battlefield, no bike riding on the battlefield. The bike trail circles around the battle area. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Yeah, so there are real restrictions on the bicycle ride. You can ride bicycles on the roads that automobiles go on, but you can never take them on the trails, except that trails that are outside the battlefield area on that long, from, uh, I'm sorry, from where Grandhead is headquarters up at, on the James River, all the way down to the five fork.
Five fork.
So, yes, there is. Yeah, I know we keep going over this. I hope when we do the, the study up there, we define what our historical area is up there, we can start laying to rest some of these questions about what is historical and what isn't historical. We do have the historical study that was done, that says the military road, I think it's 20 feet to, or 40 feet to either side of it, is part of the historical property, the areas around the redoubt and the fort are. We have the cemetery up there. I, we have, I believe, the Canadian Department of Defense believes, but they weren't 90, well, they weren't 100% sure, a sailing master from the Canadian militia who's captured at the Battle Lake Erie was brought to Frankfurt, he died here in Frankfurt. The best they could tell, he was buried where the transportation building went, the best they could tell, he went up there, but they couldn't do a real paper document trail, so they took the gravestone back with them to Canada. Otherwise, we'd have a gravestone up there for sailing master, so and so. So all I wanted to point out was the, it's partly true, yes, you can ride your bike at Petersburg, you just can't ride them on the battlefield. The horse issue, the horses come up. The veterans' homes and the national parks were all owned by the War Department, the Army, the Army. And night, right after World War I, when the, the veterans' homes and the cemeteries were transferred to the VA, and the parks were transferred to the national park system, the Army rode its staff rides, that was, they got on their horses, rode the battlefield, That was, they got on their horses, rode the battlefield and talked about the battlefield and the decisions that were made. They wanted to continue to do that. So in the transfer from the War Department to the National Park Service, they put in a provision that we can ride our horses. So John Sykes can now go out and ride his horse on the battlefield. That was, that was one of those provisions that got stuck within that. Our fort up on Fort Hill, the battle site up there, we used to be visited every year by Fort Knox when the Arma School was there. The Arma School's now gone, so we don't get them, but the National Guard comes up every other year. We just had them up there last year for a staff ride, so we do get participation from the Guard and other people coming up there to walk the battlefield and talk about the decisions that were made up there. We had three people from Frankfurt who were wounded there, and without that successful defense up there, Frankfurt would have been a Graze, or Monterey sitting on the river, because the Capitol would have gone to Louisville and we would have become Podunk bit. So it, to me, it's a very important site. Let me do one little five step and then I promise I'll be quiet. There has been talk, and it's been pooh-hooed, about making us a Civil War destination. I keep being told there's no Civil War destination here. And I go, wait a minute, we got Fort Boone up on the hill that was attacked, we got the USCT Cemetery up at the Green Hill.
Right.
We got the Confederate Cemetery up at Frankfurt, we got the spot up by the fountain where the four Confederate guys were killed, we got the Reconstruction Barracks up on Shelby Street, we got the old headquarters setting over here where the draft was run in Kentucky, and we got the old Capitol where Governor Halls was inaugurated.
The Confederate governor.
The Confederate governor, yes. And oh, by the way, the Confederates burnt the railroad bridge, where we now, the railroad bridge is now sent. And so, you know, what more do you want to talk about having a destination? You have heard me say this before, and you're gonna have to listen to me one more time. You go over to Winchester and they got this huge sign on the interstate about the Civil War fort down at Boonsburg. It's a rinky-dink little battery setting up on the hill that I don't even know it was ever armed, and they draw people from all around the world to come and see that. And we got a place where there's actual engagement and shooting done. Do we have a sign out on the interstate? Do we have a sign downtown? We got two little rinky-dink signs out on Holm Street, and let me go back, I promised one last thing, I'm bad about saying one last thing. We need some signs coming out of the Buffalo Trace the Story, running across Riley Road and right on up and in. I mean, we get people that come up there, and they get there because they fought to get up there, trying to find their way up to Thorn Hill. You get lost in Thorn Hill. If anybody's gone there, you get lost. Okay. I promise.
One quick, one quick point, Mayor.
Go ahead.
If you may recall, Chuck, in our, in our very first, I won't say kerfuffle, skirmish over this way back, Petersburg was mentioned, and I was just absolutely astonished that people thought they could ride their bikes around the crater. You cannot ride your bike around the crater.
You cannot ride your bike around the crater. No. You cannot ride your bike up to Fort Stedman with you. The Confederates launched their assault and then the Union launched their resalt back and took the place. Wherever there was bloodshed, you cannot ride your bike. Yes, you can ride your bike on that trail that carries you all the way from Grant's Headquarters on the Army of the James, all the way down to the final Five Forks where the Confederate line is turned and they start pulling their retreat back. Yes, you can ride the bicycle there, but you cannot ride it on any ground that blood was shed on. It's a, it's within the National Park Service regulations. They quoted it to me, they were supposed to send me a copy of it, but it never showed up, so.
Thank you, Chuck.
It's within their federal regulations on that deal.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you for listening to me again.
Commissioner, what's that?
So, Fort Hill, where was there, is there bloodshed all over Fort Hill? I like the thing when you said bikes around, because I think that came up at one time to have bikes around Fort Hill, so is there bloodshed all over Fort Hill?
Okay, we know that three of the people from Frankfurt were wounded inside of Fort Boone. The urban legend is that there was a Confederate killed outside, and I've been told by old-timers, he's buried here, he's buried here. I don't think that ever happened, but there's bound to be Confederates that were wounded. This is a personal take, and I'm not gonna be really step-gone, they're gonna do it. To me, the road coming up from Lanthorn Acres and across there south would be, to me, the historical site, simply because we know the horseholders are back there with their horses. Once again, this is my, when you read the documentation, the story goes all the way. If we got two hundred guys coming up on horses, in the Army, every fourth guy's a horseholder. So you got that many guys back holding the horses, and I'm gonna assume they got a little rear guard back there, too. So to me, that, they have to be over the hill, because you don't want the horses up where they could be shot. So to me, the battleground, if you want to call that, the support units and everything are extending all the way back down to a little bit past the cemetery, to that area. You throw the cemetery in with the people who were buried there and that, so to me, the historical site is that road coming up, crossing across, everything back. Whether you want to argue about the farmhouse with the old dairy farm barn staying there is a historical site, whether it's worth preserving or not. I know Sean has been talking about getting some, an archaeological survey up there, but with the University of Kentucky, kaput. That means you can't pull in students anymore to go up there and do things like that, so we're at sort of a point on that, but that'd be really nice to know, to go back there. There were archaeological studies done back in the sixties or so, Mayor, and they found out that everybody up there was armed with shotguns and twenty-twos. That's a sort of a joke, because everybody went up their honey, up on that hill up there, so the area was, oh, I need to mention that also. Reenactments, on the federal property, you can't do reenactments. If you may not know, Mill Springs is now a national monument, and this was the last year they could do a reenactment on the park, they played that up very big, and, bad thing, one last thing, I've had all the time. You people were very kind, your predecessors, to buy us that cannon up there to fire on Fort Hill.
How was it?
Yeah. Except, we're not allowed to fire it anymore. And that was one of the greatest pools for bringing school groups up there, the homeschool people and everything up there, because we would just put them around and back the gun, explain how it was fired and everything, put a one- tenth charge in it. I mean, you know, it's like loading a muzzleloader, you're putting a little thing in there and fire it. And that was, you know, they all liked it. And all last year, every group that came up, it was such great dis, what do you mean, you're not gonna fire the cannon? Well, we can't fire the cannon anymore. I would just like you guys to rethink that, that whole story. We did go through training, that, you know, you want us to go through retraining on it? Yes, I'm willing to do that, but it was one of the major attractions for the school groups coming up there. The Canoe Kentucky people always brought their, their kids up the hill, that was part of their week's summer camp, and, I mean, they were extremely disappointed, no cannon firing, and that's, you know, one of the reasons why we come up there. Okay.
We'll ask our insurers. We'll ask our insurance providers.
Yeah, okay, but, you know, if we had the training, and it's not like we're firing anything, it's not like we're putting a full charge in it, we're just putting in a small charge so it goes bang, and everybody jumps and goes, wow, that is very deep, you know.
Is that, is that a Napoleon, Chuck?
Please?
Is that cannon Napoleon?
Yeah, it's, no, it's a parrot.
A parrot, okay.
You, you, the background on this, the good mayor was gonna buy us a twenty-pound parrot being built up at Ashland, rifled, just like it should be, until he saw the price. At which point, we no longer got a rifled gun, we got a smoothbore, and since most people don't know that much difference, the smoothbore, parrot is that, we had it loaned out to Mill Springs for a while, where they were firing it, and then the mayor brought it back here when we got going up there for the firing and that.
Yeah, they can, don't mess with us.
And it was a great attraction.
Don't mess with us.
You know, our having the reenactments up there were a great draw within the Frankfurt, and once again, certain people objected to the noise up there, I can understand that. You have never been around here, Mr. City Manager, to hear us point that cannon down there at the point and fire it and hear the, the sound go off and hit the hill on the other side and bounce back and bounce back a little bit more?
Are you pointing it at City Hall?
Very good, Chuck.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you for listening.
You're a man, Chuck. Thank you for staying.
Very good.
All right. I have some, couple of points of new business, maybe, I just had a thought, maybe you two will support me on, or three of you. Why don't we ask our city curator, this, we've been having these discussions about Civil War heritage and, and developing something out of it, why don't we task our curator, Mr. John Downs, in tandem with our Parks Director, to, to gather a group of people that are interested and develop a program, a Civil Wars, before, you know, summer gets here, to adopt heritage sites, opportunities for reenactments or otherwise. I know Perryville, there's talk about transitioning it to a federal-owned system as well, which will end the reenactments there, which is the largest in the state, and there are people that are very thirsty for, for those opportunities. We do have something we could really monopolize on that has never been really well promoted.
I think it's worth exploring.
Sure. How about we ask some presentation by maybe the end of April?
So you want to develop or ask the curator to?
Recommendations for thematic programming for the city, based on Civil War heritage.
Good. And we can tie in educators and they can develop thematic events.
No.
And let's bring something maybe to our first meeting in May to, to review or give direction or something on.
That's an excellent idea, Commissioner.
How about it?
I love it, we agree.
Oh, it's a miracle.
Commissioner, everything else?
I've got two other quick things here, Mayor. I just wanted to, I know our trip to West Rock Recycling, and I do hope anyone that would like to go, I took a very small group the first time, just to explore what was there and see if it was even worth our effort, and found a great deal of opportunity, I think, and Ms. Rosen, if you could just quickly speak to the tour this Thursday and.
So I went along with Eric and a few other people to look at West Rock and found it to be a state-of-the-art recycler, could answer all kinds of questions like, why isn't there, well, we know that at least some recyclable material does not go to, or goes to China, but from the central area of the United States, nothing ever went to China, and it's still not. So this may affect some companies that can use recyclable material in their products, but more likely, and from the example of West Rock, they're finding companies all over that want the material. Plus, they are vertically integrated and they have paperboard manufacturing and paper manufacturing, so they have a rail line right there and bail up the material and ship it to them. So I think it's well worth it if more staff would like to attend, or anyone else. I did set up a Facebook page, Ann Marie Rosen for City Commission on Facebook, and posted on there about the tour, and I got two people from the general public, and I also sent messages to anyone in the city running for office, and got about six people that could fit that into their schedule. So what Kim at West Rock said is that if there's a large group, they'd separate us into two groups and run from either side of the, the operation, so it takes about an hour to get there. I recommend carpooling, and everyone will be there at ten, and will get fitted with protective equipment, hard hats and glasses, vests, and get to see it firsthand, both their recycling operation and also their composting operation, which they collect for and then ship to another company.
And that, the tour is this Thursday at ten o'clock, if any commissioners or the public would like to, to attend.
Yep.
I've already been, staff have, have went before, but I'm, I just wanted to, to bring it out to the public, that I'm encouraged, that this seems to be the best outlet available currently. The markets are constantly shifting, is what we're finding out, what we're being told there, so what works now may not work the best next year, but I know our, our staff is already working towards it, but I would like to make sure that we, our transportation for our recycling is to be bid next month, and I want to make sure that our staff considers the cost it will take to ship goods to Louisville to relaunch our recycling program, if at all possible.
And I'd like to add one more thing, is I also talked to Benson Valley Landfill about when the landfill is gonna fill up and how it's being affected by this, and we didn't talk in detail, but on their website, they say the landfill will be filled in forty-four years, but that that changes daily based on how much refuse they get, and we'd certainly be sending more to the landfill if we don't do a better job of recycling. And West Rock takes all plastics, glass, paper, metals, aluminum and steel, so it'd be good to know more about them by more people.
Mayor.
Commissioner.
I, I confess, I'm ignorant of the economics of recycling.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know how it's profitable, and in the macroeconomics, you know, why were the Asian countries buying all our recycling and then dumping half of it in the South China Sea? I'd like to, I'd like to have an idea of how that works, how it becomes profitable, and maybe we can set up something a little closer to home. Mr. City Manager.
Very likely, sure. And they are a for-profit company.
Right.
It's actually seeing the operation makes a difference. China, their ships come here delivering almost everything we buy, and they go back empty, or they can go back with things they can recycle, but they aren't taking stuff from the central United States.
I guess my question is why didn't the market drive?
That's the president. I don't want to talk to that guy. Thank you.
I know that.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor, I just had one other thing. I, I wanted to ask, we, we sort of get it in email anyway, every month or so, our financial report, but since the year I've been on the commissioner, we never actually sit and review our financials as, as a body, as most, you know, any nonprofit I'm associated with does. I thought it'd be nice to start at our work session reviewing our, our financial position as we're going into such a, an entanglement of expenses, and on top of our, our long-term planning here very shortly, that it'd be nice to have our position every month when we're discussing expenses.
Or if commissioners wanted to meet with our staff, they could do that.
I think they, I think they do it daily.
We do provide a written analysis to the board quarterly.
The TV folks can't hear over there, unfortunately.
That's okay, I was just reminding that we do provide a written narrative of financial results to the board quarterly.
I track that, too, on a graph. I use C-SPAS to the nickel.
I don't really do that.
But if there's additional information that the board would like.
I would just like for us to maybe adopt that formally each quarter or something, you know, thought it'd be good practice for us in light of the Franklin County School District's recent problems, and that we just formally have a better position.
Embezzlement. Well, we do have internal controls.
I understand. That was all my new business.
Primarily what I look at is the variances, is what I look at. I think that's probably one of the most important things, you can look at the trend.
And I'm sorry, I missed that last part because.
I'm saying, I primarily look at the variances.
Oh, yeah.
Which to me is like the most important trend, if you want to put a trend line on it. It's all right. Thank, oh, thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, I had a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
About the recycle, Ms. Beer, do we, where are we, where, what were your conclusions of West Rock? Where, where do we stand as far as that? It's a sort of a, I understand there's community going so they can get their own take on it. Where are we with that? I know we talked about looking at different options.
Yeah.
Without this committee going. They can go and look at it themselves and push recycle.
Well, staff joined this group that went to West Rock last time, last week.
Correct.
And it's going to be, or it is added to our bid documents that are going out in February.
Okay.
In the next couple of weeks. We're gonna get prices to haul, this is a hauling contract, we're gonna get prices to haul Lexington and West Rock.
Okay.
So that we'll have that option, and we can choose either one, we can switch in the middle, but the, there are ramifications to that as well. I mean, West Rock is a single stream. And Lexington at this time is not. Our option also with Lexington is to collect clean paper, like you probably saw on the news, Lexington is collecting in various locations around, and, and one of the options we considered was immediately, as soon as we can get it together, to collect at our Rouse Avenue location, and Lexington will accept that clean paper from us as well.
Okay.
So that'll help a little bit, so we've, we continue to explore those options, and we'll have a better grasp on the total cost after we bid the hauling in February, so.
And could you clarify what clean paper is?
It just means that it's not thrown in with all of the other recycling and getting the residue from the bottles and tin containers and cans.
So it's even dry.
It's dry, clean paper. I think it's everything except paperboard. The cereal boxes and things are still not included, I believe. I'll have to.
At Lexington, that's correct.
At Lexington? So it's just, okay, but West Rock is, yes, they are taking glass and paper and paperboard and all of that, so those are our facts that we're kind of weighing, and, and we will present as soon as we got a final picture of the cost.
So you're on top of it and already moving forward regardless of the group that's going, it's sort of a community, just for them to know and see what's going on as well.
Yes, and Commissioner Wiseman set up the, the last trip, and the city and the county representatives were there as well at that time. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Beer. Anyone else?
Yeah.
Just one quick one. I had a constituent, a business lady, in fact, explain or raise the concern of a real lack of affordable housing in Frankfurt, so I don't know if the city manager could explore the idea with the Frankfurt Housing Authority, Section Eight or whatever, if Board of Realtors? Authority, Section 8, or whatever, if Board of Realtors, and see if there's any alternatives out there. That's all.
If I can speak to that, John, just quickly.
If there's no objection, anyone object? No? Okay.
I sit instead of the mayor on the Housing Authority, and we are exploring their federal incentives for housing have dried up quite a lot. We are exploring what options there are out there, and particularly with the changes in the downtown where so much of the housing is that was contingent and reliant on pick pack, the discussion has been about where new housing can possibly be built in the near future, hopefully on bus lines and then proximity to shopping, so.
Okay. Who's going to bring up that redistricting? Not redistricting, we're talking, thinking about what's going on. Who's going to do the annexation motion tonight?
What do you want to include?
Y'all were talking about it, that somebody, we got a bunch of letters. Hello? You all got nothing on there? They're like, they're just taking their phone off.
Country thought, was that?
Round voice.
A bit over here. Sorry.
One item I was going to bring up in long-term planning I need you all to bring up is, we had a presentation from the developer of Parcel B and C last week, late last week, and they would like?
Can I walk out? Should I walk out? I gotta walk out, because it may have, you know, financial reasons.
The?
Thanks.
Where are we now?
The mayor's dismissing himself because we're discussing A, B, and C, because he's kin to the folks that have the property.
We met with the developer last week, and the developer is wanting to make a formal ask for a local TIF. He gave a presentation, talked to the county judge, I believe he may have brought it up to the fiscal court, that it may, if you all are acceptable, I asked the mayor if we could call a special call, it would just be our February 10th meeting for the first presentation, invite the county over to sit there and listen to the presentation by the developer, and they can leave, and we would take action, it'd be a question-answer session, a presentation by the developer on why they would like a local TIF on developing Parcel B and C, so.
And you stated that Houston?
I talked to Houston because we share.
That he was going to give that to his magistrate.
We share, we split occupational revenue with the county. So if he's going to make a presentation on a tax incentive, the county needs to be involved because it would affect their future revenues as well. So for the developer, instead of trying to go to them, they come to us, we would like to invite them to come over for the first 10 minutes, listen to a presentation, ask questions, and let yours per view. I don't know what you all decided tonight, I don't know if you're allowed to tell me, four of you here, but I just promised.
Now there's three.
There's just three.
February 10th, you all discussed it, so. And I've talked to mayor about it during this, just wanted to bring it up to you all, make sure.
Mayor's not supposed to be in the conversation.
If we're going to have a joint meeting, I'd actually like to bring in the P3 consultants that we had present to you and Laura, and just to make a quick presentation as well, I'd already asked some of the county magistrates about a joint meeting to understand that process more fully and would be more applicable if we were together. I'm sure they would be very happy to come present to us.
Yeah, I don't, from the plans I've seen with the developer, I don't.
Mr. City Manager?
Mrs. Mayor, Mrs. Mayor, approach him, may I have the floor?
Oh, yeah, Bill's gun, yes. Gophers.
You know, I believe we talked about this ad nauseam in the beginning of this thing. Certainly amenable to listening to the ideas for a TIF, as long as it includes or excludes the city schools.
It does.
Okay, then I'm good for that.
New business, we're still under new business. Mayor could step back in if you foresee him. Under new business, should we go ahead and move forward with the top two items that were discussed for the master plan? I think the money has already been earmarked for those two, so is there a way that we can go ahead and move forward, being that that's not going to be part of our budget amendment, as far as lights over?
St. Clair.
Brick alley, St. Clair, and what was number two?
That was Blanton's Landing.
Blanton's Landing overview for the boating. Could we go ahead and move forward with those, or do you suggest that?
I'd rather not discuss this tonight, Commissioner. I would like us to get into the budget session and discuss in tandem with everything else. I understand, but there's.
Can I answer your question?
I'm sorry, I appreciate your opinion, but I would like to discuss it. That's what I'm asking. So is that something we can go on and move forward? Because that wouldn't be an amendment, that was already something we have budgeted, correct?
Yeah, we have, we budgeted, you all budgeted, $150,000 for downtown master plan. That money's in our capital budget. We recently did an RFP for proposals for underutilized Blanton's Landing, got three good proposals. I'd like to use some of that $150,000 to do a feasibility study, design and estimate for a floating dock boardwalk system that maybe, we don't know where it'll run, maybe from Main Street to Blanton's Landing, and then maybe incorporate those are the responses we got on Blanton's Landing. I'd also like to use some of that $150,000 to do a formal feasibility to design and estimate for hanging string lights over St. Clair between Main and Broadway. They could be color-changing lights, there's all kinds of designs. But the problem we have is we can't even go after grants if we don't know what we need. So the feasibility, design, and estimate gets us a number, gets us a design, we can go after grants, you know, there's partners in this community, I think, that stepped forward and helped fund some of this work. I think a boardwalk dock facility, if we could swing it, would be a huge economic boon to our downtown. People would come to live downtown to walk that area. I mean, imagine a boardwalk, you could walk up to Bourbon on Main from it, you'd walk up to Goodwood, you'd have access from Main Street, and there's other proposals I can't talk about that were submitted for Blanton's Landing that would add some more items to that, so. But where we need to go to get off-center is not talk about it, it's to actually act, spend some money on design, feasibility and estimates, and we can talk hard numbers and fund resources and other things. So I'd like to move forward. The money's already budgeted, we don't need a budget amendment, but we promised you all we would bring these items to you, that we would spend on.
I'd like to direct staff to move forward, the $150,000 is there, it is 2020, and it's time to move forward for the master plan to show the community we're actually doing something. So I make a motion that you move forward in that plan, I think it's feasible, and I think it's something that needs to be done now so we can move forward for something.
My understanding, the?
Hold on a second, I gotta, you need to get a second or not?
You wasn't paying attention?
Okay, you slid a long.
If you are unsure, you can go right down and come back and bring it up later.
The motion is to allow staff and the city manager to extend the $150,000, right?
Well, it may not be that much.
You may not take it that much.
Freed up, yes, I second it.
Yes.
Okay. Motion second.
Discussion, I'd like to know on what? We had a submission of plans about Blanton's Landing, I saw it on your desk about two months ago, that haven't been circulated to any of this board's review whatsoever. I'd like to know what we're looking at first, and if that is, I've been saying since last February, I'd like for this commission to prioritize our preferences for the downtown master plan implementation and decide what we think is going to be the most impactful as a body. I'd like to look at the plans that were submitted first before we ever decide to allow staff to spend money on them.
We started reviewing the plans, and it took a little extra time because there was three submitters that I believed could all support each other, and I got permission from all the submitters to meet in the same room at the same time and talk about pushing forward a narrative where they could all be a part of it. Plans all were essentially involving access to the River of Dockage or something similar. So that's how I came to that. I will share the RFPs, keep those confidential, their proprietary information ideas from developers, but I can share that with you all.
Why don't you let people just come and review instead of passing out?
I was going to say, you don't want to pass it out unless you want all of Frankfurt to know.
I can make it available for review by you all. This is, it's your all's prerogative. The $150,000 is budgeted, we did promise to bring you these things, and?
We have a goal-setting meeting here this week, hopefully, that we've not had yet. I've been asking since last January, let's have a body goal-setting meeting. It's a bit late now, it seems that everyone's sort of a lame duck, but I think it's imperative upon us to decide where the money is best spent immediately.
Could we restate the motion? I mean, I'm most in favor of Blanton's Landing and going further on that. I can wait on a better plan or a more developed plan on the lights on St. Clair. We've also talked about crosswalks, too, and I don't know how much they would cost.
They're simple, I think we can do them at an operate.
But if this motion is just about Blanton's Landing work, I'm for it, and let's, I call for a question on the motion. We've got a motion in a second.
Just so I know, it actually takes two people to call for the question before I can actually do it unless y'all are done. Are you all done? Sounds like it. Everybody? Clerk, please go roll.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Yes.
Commissioner Tippett?
Yes.
Commissioner Wisman?
No.
Commissioner Sauer?
Yes.
Mayor May?
Yes.
There we go.
Is there any other?
And Mayor, just to stipulate for the record, that money has been budgeted.
Yes.
Right, yeah.
Right, we're not spending it.
It's a reshifting.
I just want to say congratulations to Frankfurt Hill, and job well done on the court the other day, it was an awesome game, so congratulations. I look forward to seeing them at our meeting.
Can we entertain a motion to adjourn, Mayor?
Second.
Yes. Is that a motion? Yes. Commissioner Sauer is about to make a second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Waldridge?
Thank you.
Any discussion, seeing that all those in favor, so you can probably say no.
Sorry we didn't need you, I apologize for making you stay.